Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to this Newtown Township Board of Supervisors meeting for October 26, 2022. And I'd like to thank everybody for coming and remind you that the meeting is streamed via YouTube, YouTube Live at Newtown Township BOS. Newtown Township BOS. Would you join us, join the board for a moment of silence this evening? Thank you. Now join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Lewis, are there any changes to the agenda tonight?
No changes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. That'll take us right into special actions. And we have the consideration to approve a contract extension with Wrightstown Township for police services.
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Do we have any discussion from the board?
I have a statement that I would like to read.
Okay, Mr. Mack?
In my opinion, the proposed contract underfunds the Newtown Police Department. The 2023 fee of $88,855, in my opinion, is not sufficient to cover the costs involved. This is not money that is just put away in the bank to earn interest. Services need to be provided, and those services cost money. Wrightstown residents are getting those services at much less cost per capita than Newtown residents. That's just not fair to our taxpayers. This contract does not take into account current inflation rates, which are nearly 8%, nor does it take into account the extra costs that are needed to cover Wrightstown. Police Chief Hearn has repeatedly advised us that to do an adequate job of covering the additional territory, he would need to increase the number of police officers from the current 32 to 47, nearly a 50% increase. In addition, the chief says he needs four additional police cars every year due to the extra miles needed to be covered. The price for those cars are increasing at a rate much higher than 5% a year. In addition, our police department needs a new, modern police building to replace the rundown, inadequate cottage currently used. Our police cannot even process arrests at this current location, but must travel to North Hampton's modern facility to do that. Who will pay for this new building that is desperately needed? It will be Newtown taxpayers and not Wrightstown. Finally, it is surprising to me that this contract was negotiated without any input from our supervisors, who have recently been admonished by the local press to stay in our lane. If negotiating contracts that impact our taxpayers is not staying in our lane, then I don't know what is. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Mack.
Mr. Chairman, if I may say something.
Yes, Mr. Clabro.
Mr. Mack keeps saying about how this doesn't, the taxpayers of Wrightstown aren't paying anything. Well, I don't know. Where does the $888,000 that's going to be coming the first year coming from? I believe it's going to be coming from the taxpayers of Wrightstown Township. That equates to a 2.5 mil increase in taxes if we didn't get that money. Now calculating a 5% increase per year, which I haven't even seen a CD in a bank that's been above 1% over the last 15 years, so a 5% rate of return isn't as bad as Mr. Mack says it is. By the time we get through the 10 years of this, we would have accumulated 1.45 million dollars from the Wrightstown contract. Every year, that contract would go up 5%. And if we based it, if we didn't get it, we would have to increase taxes to compensate for that lost revenue, of which we're always trying to find revenue, by increasing taxes 2.7, 2.8, 2.9, 3.1, 3.2, 3.4, 3.6, 3.7, 3.9, 4.1 mils, on top of if we have to add any other taxes. So I don't understand what the issue is here, and this gentleman talks about how we have to have additional cars. Well, he's also the one that always votes for cars to be taken away from the police. If they need three, he says, just give them two. If they need two, just give them one. So I mean, this concept of, in a roundabout way, defunding the police is basically what Mr. Mack is talking about. Not giving them the revenue to do this is basically, he's stopping, and believe me, if it's not us, then we're going to make our neighboring townships very happy. North Hampton, or maybe Buckingham, will pick up this contract, and they'll gladly take the $888,000 the first year, going up to 1.45 million in the 10th. Now unless you have a way to compensate for that income, then let's hear it. We're doing budget right now. Tell us how we're going to get that $888,000 additional. Or do you want to tax the people an additional 2.5 mils? Maybe that's what you want. Maybe you want a, instead of Wrightstown Township contract, maybe a John Mack tax in lieu of the Wrightstown Township contract. Maybe that's your concept. I have no idea. But I don't know, I don't see anything wrong with this. You have seen it, you have seen something wrong with this since you've been on the board, and apparently, this income coming in is no good for you.
Anyone else?
Can I make a rejoinder to that? As I said, this is-
Then I'll rebuttal whatever you say.
Fine. This, in my opinion, underfunds the police department, not enough, it's not paying enough for the services that are offered. 20% of all the calls that the police department makes is in Wrightstown. This has not covered 20% of that activity. If we didn't have Wrightstown to cover, I mean, we could work maybe with the borough and take over their police department. I'm sure they would give us $888,000 too. So the other thing is, this contract is a 10-year contract. I mean, I've never heard of such a thing. You know, we can't get out of it, and we're stuck with it. And we'll see what happens when we need the new police building, I'm sure. This is not going to be an increase in taxes for Newtown residents, but it's not going to, the Wrightstown Township is not going to be paying for that, that's for sure.
Wrightstown Township, in these increases, or these, this money they're giving us, is technically, again, equates to millage. So when you're saying the Wrightstown, where do you think Wrightstown's getting this? It's just falling out of the sky? They're getting it from their residents. You just, because it doesn't say tax from the Wrightstown Township residents, you just think that this money is in some sort of special account that Wrightstown Township has for us? And I agree with you. We should, we should maybe go into an agreement with Newtown Borough. But do you think Newtown Borough has as much money as Wrightstown Township to give us And I think we, maybe we should consider Upper Makefield. They have a small police force. But if we can't prove we can even handle Wrightstown Township, why would these other townships even want to think of us incorporating and patrolling their townships when we just negate Wrightstown Township? And I don't know, but I never heard anything about 47 additional, or 47 police officers. Where did you pull that number out of?
The chief, John Hearn.
Mr. Manager, have you heard this number?
Our target is 35.
Thank you.
If I-
Well, that's not what I heard. The chief said he'd be happy with 42, and he quoted a study that he said he got for no charge whatsoever, which gave him that 47 count that would be necessary to cover the territory.
If I may say something. I've heard this 8% inflation rate, and yes, it is an 8% inflation rate now. Anytime during that 10-year period, it's going to average out to less, I would dare say, less than 5%. We're at a high point now. It's going to improve at some point. So throwing that out is not exactly what, you know, covering the 5%. That 8% inflation rate will go down. As far as, as far as the actual dollar amount each year, in the third year, it will go over a million dollars. And by the, and I think Mr. Clabro had it right, it's 1.45, 1.44 million at the end of 10 years. So that, and I would say it goes beyond numbers. We can crunch all the numbers we want. We have a good working relationship with Wrightstown and our police department, and I think, maybe you can't put a value on that. So that's where, that's where I'm at, and that's why I'm going to vote for this. Any other comments from the supervisors? Any from the public?
Is this a public comment?
Public comment on this issue?
Off the mic.
We'll have general, we'll have general public comment in a minute, once we, I think that's the next, that's the next agenda item. Mr. McCarron. Good evening.
Good evening. Frank McCarron, Delancey Court. I just want to say a couple of things before I say what I was going to say. Just so you know, the lease budget for 2023 is 8% more than 2022. So if you need an 8% number, it's right in front of you. Now, this is from the Buck Scanney Herald, an article about Wrightstown votes to continue to receive police coverage. And it says, it's a quote from the supervisor chairman of Wrightstown. It says, "Newtown Township police are required to provide Wrightstown residents with the same level of service as provided to Newtown Township residents." Very simple statement. Problem is, we are paying more than the Wrightstown residents. So I sent some schedules to the supervisors over the weekend, which I've updated, and I just want to have it attached to the minutes, printout, so all the residents can see what I put together. I'll publish it with the next minutes. Wrightstown residents, 3,300 residents, paying $888,000, amounts to a per capita $270 per person. Newtown residents, when we're paying next year, $7.35 million for police, and you back out that $888,000, Newtown residents are paying $325 per person, per capita. Okay? So 325 versus 270. So if the deal is Newtown Township police are required to provide Wrightstown residents with the same level of service as provided to Newtown Township residents, shouldn't they pay the same amount? Shouldn't they, shouldn't that be averaged? The fee would have to go up 153,000, just to average that out, just to, just to, apples to apples. Now maybe you say, well, you know, maybe it doesn't cost as much, maybe they, they don't need as much. And as Mr. Mack mentioned, it's just the opposite, because their calls for service are 19%. So they're 14% of the overall population, they're 19% of the calls for service. Now if you wanted to allocate our 7.35 million based on calls for service, it's, because our police chief, which comes here and gives you an incident report, he goes to Wrightstown's Board of Supervisors and gives them an incident report. So if you were to take that fee and allocate it based on calls for service, they'd be paying a million four, not 888,000. And then if you wanted apples to apples, we have 20,000 people living in 12 square miles. On a relative basis, that means there are 3,300 people should be living in two square miles, 20 and 12, 3,300 and two. But there are 3,300 live in 10 square miles. So that's 45% of the combined territory that we have to patrol. Now, there's actually a state office that comes to townships, and they do studies of allocating costs, when they're different regions, different townships have a cost-sharing arrangement. Or they'll go to individual townships and tell you, this is, if you want to have a police department, this is what it will cost you. And they would, if they went to here and they said, well, let's take those three factors, population, incidents, geographic size, and let's allocate on that basis, that fee would be $2 million. Now, so you could say, well, Wrightstown would never want that. They just want 24/7, 365 coverage. Well, that's, they'll do those studies for townships as well. And what they say is, all right, that means you need five officers on patrol. You need two supervisors, you need a police detective, a police chief. It's a million and a half dollar cost. And then there's another way to look at it, which is, every one of those incidents take time, and there's a different methodology that they use, and they look through that methodology and say, okay, if that takes 45 minutes per incident on average, and you back that out, and you figure out how many, and no more than a third of a patrol out of a shift should be spent answering calls, that means, again, it's just math works out, you're again, back at that number. Now, they could leverage what we do, and that million and a half dollar number could be a million three, but pretty much, if they want 24/7, 365 for their level of incidents, that's what it costs. Now, I get it that if we don't get the $900,000, we have to find it somewhere else. But the logic of spending a million three of worth of police services to get back 900,000 doesn't add up. What it means is that your police services won't be in Wrightstown. Yes, you'll be paying more, but you'll get those policemen here in Newtown. And just so we're on the same page, in terms of numbers, what I've heard, so in the e-consult study, the police chief said that he uses this core services method, and he determined that we need 41 officers. That was his number. And slowly, we've been creeping up to that number. All right? E-consult said, 29, 29 officers now, you have four retirements coming up, three actually retired, and Sergeant Ambrose passed away. Hire three officers, junior, to replace them, and that's what our recommendation is. Except, we hired four, and we replaced the four. So we're creeping up. And so, and let's be honest, when the police chief comes, like he does this year, and says, I want two more officers, he's filling an open lieutenant position, which, 125,000, he's not just promoting, which doesn't also make sense, because sergeants make more than 125,000, but he's not just promoting a sergeant to a lieutenant, he's treating it as an opening. He's going to hire two officers. So he's creeping up. No one here wants to say, I'm soft on crime, so I'm going to say no to the police chief. So that number has been inching up to 35, and it's going to get to 41. So if you just say, Wrightstown, we're not doing this contract, guess what? You're at the 35, and you're the number the police chief wants without Wrightstown right now. So, you know, there's, there's a lot of things you could do here. You know, you could say to Wrightstown, we'll give you 9/11 response, 24/7, 365, but we're not going to give you the same level of patrol that we're giving to our Newtown residents. So your response time might be a little slower, and preventing crimes might be off, but we can give you 900,000 worth. And quite honestly, Buckingham Township may be a better choice for Wrightstown, because while we have, we had steady 28, 29 officers, 2015 and 2019, and now we're going this hiring spree, you know, the chief says he needs 41, we're up to 35. Buckingham Township, which has same-sized population, 21,000 people, and they're over 33 miles, they have 21 officers, 2015, they had 21 officers. They're not making any change. So they're providing one officer per thousand people of residents, which is a really low number. And they could say to Wrightstown, okay, we'll add three officers. You give us the money, we'll add three officers, maybe, and a supervisor. And, you know, whenever they're out there, they're out there answering calls, but that's what you get. And maybe that's what they can afford, that's fine. But the idea that we're going to take a million four of our police coverage and give it to them for $900,000 is ridiculous. At a minimum, if you're going to say everyone's treated equally, they should be paying at least 153,000 more. There's no reason why we're paying $325 per person when they're paying $270 per person, and they have 19% of the interest, incidents, when we have, and 14% of the population, and they have 45% of the area, then we need patrol. This, this, look, I would, I'd extend this agreement for a year, and I'd actually do some math. I mean, that's what you should have been given, an analysis, to show this. You know, I, you could, somebody can go and look at this, you can get this state office to come out and look at this and tell you what's a fair number. And that's all I'm saying. You want to do this deal, you can do a fair number. If you can't reach a fair number, or they don't want to pay that fair number, they can get less service. But to just give away our police coverage, which is effectively what you're doing, makes no sense to me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, may I just clear up some misconceptions that were just mentioned?
Okay.
Even though Wrightstown Township may be approximately nine square miles, it's not as densely populated as Newtown Township. And if anyone knows the history of the jointure, the reason for Newtown Township to have its density, have its business area, have its business commons, is because Newtown Township took it upon them that they would do that. So when you're talking about patrolling nine miles, nine square miles of Wrightstown Township, which only basically have single-family homes, which I believe sit on three acres of property, because that's what they wanted, it's not that much in density, whereas we have, we have business commons that are constantly occupied. We have townhouses, we have condos, we have single-family homes, all within, all within our property boundaries. Now, just to elaborate on Mr. McCarron, he's talking about 3,000 residents that live within the square mileage of Wrightstown Township. I see a gentleman who's going to be coming up here and talking about the biggest and the best. Well, the biggest and the best has approximately 5,000 residents just within Newtown Grant. So what he's talking, and Newtown Grant is comprised of townhouses, condominiums, single-family homes. They don't sit on three-acre plots of land like they do in Wrightstown. So what he's saying that the patrols of Wrightstown are just as much as the patrols of Newtown, that's a fallacy. You have more people in Newtown. You have more people not only living in Newtown, but when the, when the working force is here, that increases our daily population of Newtown. And I don't know, I don't know, but Wrightstown is basically connected to Newtown, which is almost like an annex of Newtown Township. And I don't know, I've driven through Wrightstown Township, and I'm sure patrol cars have driven through Wrightstown Township. It doesn't take much time to drive through Wrightstown Township. And the calls that come in, I don't think they're for any major crime. He's saying that we report, we report for anything. The police, the police report could be for, you know, a broken window in someone's house, and they don't know who threw the rock through the window. So these incidents reports are fabricated. He can say anything he wants in regards to how much they should give us, how much they shouldn't give us. I hope Buckingham Township is watching this, because if Buckingham Township scoops it up, we could thank him for losing the contract and giving it to Buckingham Town- I believe he spoke already. Is he going to come up again and speak?
You're saying things about me, if I'm going to-
Right, that's-
I didn't use your name.
You can take your by name.
All right, go ahead. Let Mr. DeApril speak first.
Guy wants to hog you, hog you, yeah, thing all the time. John DeApril, Newtown Grant, biggest and the best. Johnny Mack, you didn't write that letter. Does he write it for you? He was one of your Meet Mack Monday guys, you know, one of his favorite people. You know, it kills me that, you know, here's a guy that, I'm talking about you too. Here's a guy that only lived there a few years, you know, bought himself a million-dollar house over in Delancey, you know, complained about the taxes all the time. Million-dollar house, you know. Well, anyhow, you know, complaining about taxes, anti-tax, anti-police, you know, what's he want? What's he want? How many times I have to tell you people? The city limits of Philadelphia is less than 12 miles away. You got Trenton, how close? Look at, look at what's happening with the, a lot of the businesses and stuff around getting robbed and all that stuff. You know, why? Why? Because they're coming from Philly and these other places, you know. You probably didn't even know that Buckingham did Wrightstown before, because you don't, you don't know too much. You just stayed in your homeowners association over there on the one side of Newtown, and that's all you know. You don't know, you didn't, probably didn't even know where Newtown Grant was. Anyhow, you know, you gotta, you gotta think about it. At last meeting, I said, why don't you talk to the supervisors in Wrightstown? They're approachable people. They shop here. I see them all the time. You know, Jane, Chester, they're approachable people. You could have talked to them. You always write online how many hours you spent doing your supervisor's job. Well, you asked for the job. You took it, you ran, you gotta like that.
Commenting about a specific supervisor.
You're talking about Wrightstown. I'm talking about Wrightstown Police here. Did you talk to the chief? I told you to talk to the chief. Did you talk to the chief? You probably need to talk to, he's right here. He's an employee, which you have charge of.
This is public comment, and I don't want to have back and forth.
It's not public comment, you're talking about Wrightstown. You're talking about the issue that's on the floor.
I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Don't listen to him, he don't know nothing. You know, but anyhow, you know, you didn't do this stuff. You can, they're right there. You drove over their building, it's right there, it's real close, you know. But then again, you're on the other side, you don't know that. But anyhow, you don't want any police people here. You know, you're talking about mileage on cars and stuff like that, you know, if they get called, they go. You know, you probably don't even know that Wrightstown doesn't have sewage, and that's why they're not, they not have a bunch of houses there. You know, and the three-acre thing is not just the only problem of residents there. But, you know, don't let these guys that don't know nothing about the township, only moved here a few years ago, don't let them try to bully you. The guy spent what? How many, how many minutes up here talking? Thank you.
Okay. Before we get into a lot of back and forth-
I have one thing to say.
One thing.
Mr. Clabro, you said that I fabricated the incident report. I'll have you know that that's the incident report. Those are the numbers that our police chief reports to the Board of Supervisors of Wrightstown Township. So if you think that's fabricated, you take up with him. He's using that number to justify, under his core service method, how many officers he needs.
Your fabrication is in the, actually assuming the severity of those calls, and that's the fabrication.
There's not fabrication, that's just, that's the record for the-
Oh, so what, are there murders and kidnaps, or what's going on that they're making these calls? You don't even know what happens when they make these calls.
This number is being determined, the officers, that's not true.
Can we, can we set a good, can we set a better example for the young people that are in the audience, please?
One last, all right, fine. Well, yes, usually, when someone gives a public comment, someone doesn't say something derisive about them when they leave. And that's, that's the issue that you allow happen with, with Mr. Clabro.
You said things about me when I wasn't even here. And I watched it on television, Mr. McCarron. When I was out, when I had COVID and was sitting in the hospital, I watched you talking about me, because you knew I wasn't here to defend myself. So don't be such a coward.
I, I, this is more of this. Now, one officer, one officer- Now, one officer, one officer, this is city, this is the state offices that compute this, and this is a well-known fact. One officer, 24/7, 365, one officer in Wrightstown. That requires five officers. That requires two supervisors. You add those numbers up, it's 1.3 million dollars. These are all these studies say. You don't believe me, then call, call the, call the state office and have them come in and look at your numbers. Thank you.
Okay. Is this still in the police contract?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, yes.
It's about policing in general, but it involves the Wrightstown contract.
Please state your name.
My name's Don Mahalik, and I live in Newtown Township. And I'm a retired Secret Service agent, and I would think or two about policing. Standard policing formulas is 2.2 officers per thousand residents. The chief is actually being generous when he says he only needs 41 officers. By my numbers, it's 68. The police department, the fire department, and EMS have been underfunded for too long. The township's sitting on $2 million of ARPA funding, half of which has still not been appropriated. It's over a million dollars sitting in a bank someplace that the federal government gave to local and state jurisdictions for improvements to fulfill the gap for the COVID situation, where there was a gap with COVID funding. That money was given specifically to state and local governments, $350 million Congress appropriated, in order for state and local governments to address needs like in public safety due to the impact of COVID. Your police department is underfunded, your EMS is underfunded, and your fire department is underfunded. And some of that money from the ARPA funding could and should be directed towards those public safety agencies. Not doing that, as that gentleman said, where we sit between Philadelphia and Trenton, and the call volume of the police department has gone up 3,000 calls, and yet the police department is attriting officers is dangerous. And the township should take steps to remediate that. When the situation with law enforcement officer recruitment is dismal, people don't want to go into the line of work. And by not funding your police department, that's going to continue. And all that's going to do is attract more problems for Newtown. And nobody in this township wants those problems. And the only way to stop those problems is if they're properly funded, trained, and supported police department. So I commend Chief Hearn for coming to you with a, with a middle road that he could work with. But that's not the solution. The solution is to properly and fully fund the police department, use the ARPA funding that the federal government gave you to fill those gaps. Because without that, your emergency services are withering on the vine. The fire department's having a problem recruiting, your EMS is having a problem recruiting. And the only way to do that is to show that the township supports those public safety agencies that are extremely important to make sure that the quality of life in Newtown Township remains the way it is. Thank you.
Thank you. I would just mention that we, if I'm not mistaken, in our first million dollars that we spent, there were some police cars that was expended in that first million. And we had some plans for the second million.
That's a clause that's abandoned. Thank you.
And we also have, we're also looking at some budget impacts for the fire, fire services coming up in the 2023.
A little bit helps. Thank you.
Yep. Yes, sir.
Good evening. Blake Hamon, I actually came up here from Middletown, but I actually came up here for another reason. But being someone that worked in the township for over 35, 33 years, and retired out of the township, and a former resident, I would just like to say a few things.
Is this about the police contract?
Police, yes. Okay, so am I to understand, is it a 10-year contract?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any way, like, an escalation clause over that time? Because what you are paying now versus then.
Five percent a year.
Okay, okay. But a couple other concerns. Since I said I've been up here and I grew up, up in Bucks County all of my life, I remember when St. Mary's was not in existence. Me and my ex-wife, we moved into Tyler Walk when all the bulldozers were going nuts back in the 1980s. So we have seen, I have seen the growth and everything, but just a 10-year contract, you know, is too long to me personally. Because that is basically saying that you have to buy your groceries at a certain store for 10 years. I am not, the emergency services and me being, used to be in emergency services, was that you need to back them up. You, there's no question about that. Newtown has a nice quality of life. The rest of the area, you know, Wrightstown did have their own police department back how many years ago? And then they did, and I believe if I'm wrong, I stand corrected, they did contract with Buckingham, and then they came to Newtown. Newtown Township used to cover Newtown Borough back in the days as well. Newtown Borough had their own department. They disbanded it. They went to the township. They decided they wanted to go back on their own again. So those are other options. Maybe other options are maybe to talk to the neighbors and maybe regionalize. Because there are some depart, there's an area up in the upper part of the county that is regionalized for police protection. And then there is a few fire houses, fire companies up there that have regionalized. Maybe going in with, I don't know, on the public, on the police side, that side, I don't know. But back how many years ago, there used to be a consortium where you would budget and pull your sources together, and maybe get a little better bang for your buck on certain things. So just, just a few things, I don't know, but that's why I said 10 years, I think, is super long as a contract. You know, you know, maybe at a certain time, you know, a couple of years, and then go for, and then if it's performance, then you base it on. I'm not against the money going to them. You need, you need the protection, and, you know, that's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Hamon. I just, I want to clarify two other things real quickly, and then maybe we can call a question. Two things. One is that there is a termination. I think someone had said that this is 10 years and we're, we can't get out of it. There is a termination clause for, without cause, by either party giving the other two years prior notice of his intention to terminate the contract. So it's not absolutely 10 years forever. And I'm forgetting what the second thing was. I am ready, however, to call the question if there's no other, no other comments.
And we're moving past the police department?
As soon as we vote. When I say call the question, I'm going to have the board vote on it. So. All those in favor of adopting the contract extension, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries for one. Okay, thank you. That brings us to our first round of public comment. So now, now we're good for anything not on the agenda. And I believe what you're here to talk about is not on the agenda right now.
Correct.
I would just ask, please give your name, so.
My name is Valerie Mahalik. I live at 119 Hillburn Drive in Newtown Township. This is my daughter Elizabeth, who is a student at Newtown Middle School. I know you've received many emails from myself, along with many of my neighbors from the Newtown Walk community about our pedestrian crosswalk, which is actually a mid-block crosswalk. It is not in an intersection. And many of us have experienced near-hit experiences there. We actually have someone here that will speak, whose husband was actually hit trying to move his two daughters out of the way. Since our advocacy this past July, which we've started as a community, we do appreciate some of the measures that you've taken with extra signage. But I do want to say that the pedestrian refuge that was implemented, that was not something that was, you know, brought to our attention, with all due respect, is useless. It has actually created more confusion to motorists. I live at the front of the community, and as motorists approach this crosswalk, the pedestrian refuge, although it is visible, depending on the time of day with the sun glare, motorists don't know what to do. I witnessed a man the other day go in there with a baby in a stroller as a police officer was coming out of his car from the cemetery that was parked to mark speeding, and they almost got hit in the, in the refuge area. The refuge area is at the same level of the street. Most pedestrian refuge are lifted, they're elevated and on a sidewalk. So for children in particular, the children sitting right here, to stop there midway, to wait for a car to stop, is just not safe. It is actually right in the turning lane to turn into Newtown Walk. I have mentioned multiple times to the supervisors about funding. I've been on John Mack's calls, which I appreciate that he has them, the Meet Mack Mondays, for residents to be on and voice their concerns. And on the website, as my husband mentioned earlier, there is the ARPA funds. 550,000 of the ARPA funds is allocated for the Lower Dollington Historical Trail, which the crosswalk falls under. So our request all along has not been for a pedestrian refuge. It has been for some type of blinking light. And one of my neighbors will discuss different options for that and why something like that is needed instead of just having a pedestrian refuge. The other request that we continue to make is to have the speed limit reduced to 25 miles per hour. On the other side of the cemetery where Penn Street is, it is 25 miles per hour. The problem is, as motorists are leaving the borough, they see the increased speed limit of 35 miles per hour, and they basically put the pedal to the metal. And by the time they're increasing as they go up that slight hill there, which is where the blind spot is, they're hitting the crosswalk, which is why it's really dangerous. So our request is to keep the speed limit at 25 miles per hour from the borough all the way to the traffic light where Lower Dollington intersects with Newtown Yardley Road. I don't want to take a lot of time, because we do have the children here that wanted to share their scary experiences in the crosswalk. I know there's a lot of issue with pedestrian safety, so we do appreciate your taking the time. And we do request that this be put on the agenda for the next meeting, and we would like some answers as to funding. We are also working with Representative Warren's office. I know he's been in contact with many of you about grants that he's looking into. But honestly, I think we can start with the ARPA funds with the $550,000 that is allocated for the Lower Dollington Trail. Do you want to share, Elizabeth, what you've experienced there?
Sure. Hi, my name's Elizabeth Mahalik. One of the experiences that I've actually had at the crosswalk was me and my friend Bryce were coming back from walking into town from our school. And there was this, like, car that was coming super fast. And when we were going to cross, the car didn't stop for us, so we had to go back before we actually got hit by the car, because the car was not stopping for us. And the car didn't see us. Another one was basically, I was just trying to cross my bike, and like, no, sorry. No one was stopping for me. And like, whenever I would try to cross, like, people would just speed. And like, I just feel like, yeah, like, someone can severely get hit there. So it's like, not a good area to like, cross, because everyone's just going really fast, so, yeah.
And we were told by the police department that state law is, in order for a motorist to stop at a pedestrian crosswalk, the pedestrian actually has to move into the crosswalk. Is that true? So to teach that to a child, right? To say, okay, go into the crosswalk and pray that, you know, they're going to see you, is a very dangerous situation. This crosswalk is very unique to all of the other ones heading into the borough, because it's not in an intersection. The other thing that I just wanted to mention is, one of the neighbors in my community had mentioned to me, has there been any discussion about taking the crosswalk out altogether, adding a sidewalk in front of Newtown Walk? And where the actual crosswalk is with Newtown Yardley Road and, is it Elm Street?
North Elm.
North Elm.
On the north side.
On the north side, move the crosswalk there. I don't know what the cost factors would be to do something like that, who would maintain the sidewalk. But I'll let my neighbor Greg Zukowski, who's done a lot of information and who has also emailed you, speak to that. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Good evening. I'm Greg Zukowski. I'm a resident of Newtown Walk. I was past president of the HOA, on the HOA for too many years. It's my second time. First time, I actually thanked the Board of Supervisors, Manager Lewis and Supervisor Davis for all the assistance that we received during transition. But I did want to, you know, comment on what Valerie was talking about. I sent a pretty detailed email to the Board of Supervisors on the 13th of October. And Valerie was talking about speed limits, but I had the engineered approved plans, which were from 2006, reviewed 2007. A lot of time is passed. Walden Court has moved in with 60 units. We have 102 units. Average two vehicles per, per unit. You've got a lot of vehicles, a lot more traffic than we had before. I've talked about coming from the borough, going into the, into the township. And I also sent the drawing indicating that there is an 11-foot change in elevation and a radius. Now, when you stand at North Elm at the Sunoco Station, looking up, you can barely see the crosswalk. And the biggest issue is, you can't even see the curb coming from there. So as you're coming, as you're coming up, you're coming up the grade, the speed limit changes about 60 yards before the crosswalk from 25 to 35. So I don't want to take a lot of time. I addressed a lot of these issues in the email. Also, coming from the opposite direction from the bypass, you're at 45 miles an hour. Once you pass Headley, it changes to 40. And like, another 40 yards at Ricky Steel's, it changes to 35. You have a six-foot increase in elevation and a more pronounced radius. So I'm saying that when you look at the plans, we have line-of-sight issue. We also have the radius issue. And, you know, respectfully, I'm asking if we could put this on the agenda, as I had a long conversation with Supervisor Mack, and I received Chairman Fisher's email. And talking, in Chairman Fisher's email and talking with Manager Lewis this evening, we totally understand that you have to be in a crosswalk. I've been in there many times, and you'll stand, the cars whiz by. So it is very important, and I really respectfully ask that we put this on the agenda for further detail, because there's been too many incidents. Thank you very much. And I'd like to ask Tracy Bowen and Sydney and Chloe to come up.
Hi, how are you?
Welcome.
Tracy Bowen Tobin. I am also a resident of Newtown Walk. My twin daughters, Sydney and Chloe Tobin. We are here, of course, reiterating everything that's already been said, but unfortunately, we are a family that has been affected by it. My husband was crossing the street with the two, with my girls. He was hit by a car. Fortunately, he was able to throw them out of the way so that they were spared. But he was in fact hit. He was on a bike. Thankfully, he just experienced scrapes, bruises, nothing serious, thank goodness. His bike was totaled. But again, the driver of the car that did hit him was kind enough to stop. He sincerely apologized. He repaired the bike, paid for the repair. And he explained to us that he was unable to see anything because of the glare. He was coming from the golf station, coming into the borough. He said, the sun glare was so bad, I couldn't see at all. Didn't even see them standing there. And he just said, I honestly, he's like, I just didn't even have any knowledge of people crossing the street. So we really believe that a blinking light, something that would be in the sightline, would really be helpful to get a driver's attention. Everything that's been done so far, which we really appreciate, is on the ground. And it's kind of hard to see, whether, you know, we had the, the new signage being there, seeing a pedestrian crossing, and also this refuge. It's kind of confusing, and a driver isn't necessarily looking at that. And then just to further that, you know, we did have our bus stop there as well. And having the kids get off the bus, we have to cross the street. Cars don't stop. They never pay attention to a bus, unfortunately. We've had far too many incidences where they've almost been hit again crossing the street. We have moved the bus stop to the Lower Dollington entrance. Unfortunately, that's been worse, because the speed limit is higher there, and they're coming down a hill a lot of times. We've requested to have that changed back because of that situation. But again, just, again, being a family that has been directly affected by it, we strongly urge you to consider a blinking light. And we thank you very much for your attention to this and all you have done so far. So we hope to keep the momentum going. It's really an issue for all of Newtown, not just our neighborhood. This is a main crosswalk to get into the borough for so many residents of Newtown. And that's what makes this living here also so wonderful. You can walk. You can walk right into town. You can walk right into town, and we're hoping to make it just safer for everybody. So thank you. Thank you very much.
I'm Randy Edgington. These are my grandchildren. We regularly, and I'm a Newtown Walk resident as well, we have regularly been biking in the community and crossing the road there for years now. And we've had, every single time virtually, the situation is such that I am flailing and waving down cars to stop on one side, then trying to wave down to the other side to get them to stop and achieve that so that we can safely cross. Clearly, it's unsafe for these children at their age to cross on their own, and it's just a constant issue. And I can see, you know, with the sightlines and, you know, why that's a problem. And I think also, you know, our town is a destination now, you know? People come and visit all the time, and they're not familiar with the traffic patterns, the speed limits and everything else. So I think clearly they need to reduce the speed limit. Perhaps we could get it down to twenty-five, starting at Steel's Golf entering town and leaving town, and reduce it at that point could help us do that as well. But we've had instances where cars just don't stop. And Jackson, do you want to speak to what happened to you?
Yeah, I'll share. So we were gonna cross, we were like, we were gonna cross, I forget exactly if that day we had our bikes or not, if we were walking them across or we were just walking across or something. But we actually were lucky in that two cars from both sides appeared to get them to stop relatively quickly. But when we started across the street, there was someone on the one side that was going so fast that they swerved around one of the cars that were stopped and almost hit us. So it's kind of hard with the speed that they're going at to be safe there. So, yeah.
So we thank you for your attention and hope we can get to some improved resolution to make this safe. As I said, right now, it's totally unsafe for these young children to try to cross on their own without an adult helping them. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Charlie Foyer, and I live in Newtown Township. And I've lived in Newtown Walk, as a matter of fact, for fourteen years, next to that guy. And I've known these kids since they were born. But I wrote all of you an email with an accounting of what I witnessed when I was turning in from Newtown Yardley Road into Newtown Walk. And everyone's described it very accurately, the grade, you can't see it. And I think everyone knows that when people leave the twenty-five mile an hour borough limit, it's a race to the bypass. They're trying to get to the light, they're trying to get all the way to the bypass and get out of here. And I've been witnessing it for that long, but on one evening, I think it was in September, I was coming up, and I got into the left turn lane to go into Newtown Walk, which is separate. And the Mercedes and Subaru behind me couldn't see the, obviously couldn't see the crosswalk. But when I got into that left lane, they were doing at least forty miles an hour, and there was an elder gentleman on a bicycle whose rear, he almost got, he was this close to being clipped. And I, it was too quick for me to pull up a phone, but I leaned on the horn, and the Subaru, the second car, came to a screeching halt. And that's just one instance. Since I wrote that email, I've pro, I go there, I turn in all the time, and it doesn't matter what time of day, it happens. And I honk the horn and flash and pointed, pointed people actually over the roof that are in the crosswalk. I had a Ford Ranger pickup guy wave at me the other day going by. And so I can't add much more, but those are just personal. I go in there all the time, and I know these kids. So I was doing a little research to try to help you and help us and help the community. I'm glad there are people here who may not know this about this intersection, because the more people that do should. And just to back up what's already been said, Yardley's twenty-five miles an hour from ninety-five all the way into the town. State Street from the bypass into town is twenty-five miles an hour all the way in. So it doesn't make much sense why this road isn't. But the flashing light is also very important, obviously, because people, and I should mention that when that occurrence happened with the old man on the bicycle almost getting hit, thankfully, you guys had placed a parked Newtown Township vehicle on the cemetery lawn, but it obviously didn't make much difference. That car was parked there, but this still happened. So I did a little research to help, and this is a market research study that was done by a company up in Connecticut. And it's a distillation of the Federal Highway Administration, the National Traffic Safety Administration, Federal Highway Association. And it describes the development of mid-block crosswalks, gives you statistics on how they came about. And I'm going to leave you with this. It also discusses the low-tech solutions that we already have and that aren't working. Then it gets into the lights and the higher tech. And actually, the company that makes products funded this white paper, but the data is According to the National Highway Traffic and Safety Administration, at twenty miles per hour, ten percent of the pedestrians hit die. At thirty miles an hour, forty percent die. No, at thirty. And at forty miles an hour, eighty percent of pedestrians are killed. And I can tell you, those cars are coming up thirty-five, forty miles an hour out of the borough at that crosswalk. So I appreciate your help, and I want to leave you with this. You all received an email from the
Yeah, I saw the email. I just haven't had a chance to read it yet.
It's attached. But I just thought I'd give you a copy, and I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can I say something? I think what I've heard is two things. A flashing, button-controlled light such as might be on North Sycamore, I think, by the Jefferson Bridge, Jefferson Street Bridge, where somebody could press the button and it would flash at the twenty-five mile per hour. And you requested to have this on the agenda. Can we get a consensus? Maybe we can get this on the agenda, and we have a traffic engineer, and do some more research on that kind of flashing light and what it might take to reduce the speed limit to twenty-five, just at some future, not too distant future, Board of Supervisors meeting?
So you're making a suggestion?
Yes, I'm making a suggestion.
Any others have a comment on?
I have a comment. I don't think a flashing light is going to do it. I think we need a full-blown light there. That's my personal opinion. I'd like to see what our traffic engineer has to say about that. I see the blinking lights. I'm on the other side at the Windermere intersection, and I see how ineffective that is. So just a thought.
Just a question for the manager. That's a township road, correct?
That's correct.
So we have the ability to lower the speed limit to twenty-five miles an hour if the board sees fit?
It needs to be approved by PennDOT, but yes, we've started the initial steps to have that process begin.
Now, the blinking light that we're talking about, which is maybe similar to what's down at Chandler Hall and so on, that's within our power to institute something like that?
It needs to be, also needs to be approved by PennDOT.
Which would be easier than a full-blown light, because then it has to get PennDOT approval in regards to a full-blown red light, so to speak?
Yeah, that's correct.
So I mean, would it be easier for us to maybe start with the blinking light and work our way towards a full-blown light if that's, if that's the case?
Yes, and that's what we've asked the traffic engineer to take a look at. First is the reduction in speed limit. We've provided them with the crash data, crash history for that intersection. We've made upgrades, current upgrades. We've requested the school district move the bus stop, which they've complied with. So we have been working with this group of residents, and we'll continue to do so. But we're taking this step by step. The next step is to look at the speed limit reduction. The following step after that, if there are still issues, is to look at some sort of signal or a three-way stop sign or some other sort of mitigating factor. As of right now, we're getting in the initial phases of approaching PennDOT to address the speed, the speed concerns that you guys have. So that's sort of where we're at right now. We'll be happy to bring back any report to the board in the future that we may have.
Would rumble strips be of any help as regards to, like, when a car goes across and they're going to feel them on their tires, which will give an indication that, you know, either slow down or there's going to be a stop up ahead? I mean, I go across them all the time on the turnpike, and it's, you know, it's very noticeable when your car hits those rumble sticks. But is that something that our Public Works Department could do?
It's, that may be part of the engineer's recommendation. We don't know that right now. If that is something, that is something that a contractor would need to do. We don't have the equipment to do that sort of work.
I have no problem with adding this to the agenda, Mr. Chairman.
I agree. I think we should. And if you can get things moving along as quick as possible, Mike, as far as engineering goes, that would be great, Tim. Thanks.
I certainly make that, while you're coming up, I certainly make that unanimous, that we should put it on an agenda, and I'll work with the manager to put it on just as soon as we can.
We really appreciate that. As far as the stop signs go, I just came from a community where we had a very similar situation, and they tried with the stop signs, and it was a line-of-sight kind of issue. We did the rumble strips as well. When it's a line-of-sight issue, again, having something up high will be easier for motorists to see. I honestly believe a lot of times motorists aren't ignoring us. I honestly believe by the time the motorists get there, they're like, oh, my gosh, like with what happened to Tracy. So just so we're not wasting money, I think a three-way stop, again, we're going to have the same issue that it's not high enough for vehicles to see, just my own opinion from previous experience.
If I could, I just wanted to make one more comment. Unfortunately, I leave early in the morning, and it's dark. The last couple of days, there's been very heavy fog. So as you're coming up Washington Street into, into the township, you're not seeing anything. However, at the corner of Dollington and Newtown Yardley Road, when I look up, I do see the blinking light. So again, I appreciate your comments about a full signal, but a light is definitely necessary, specifically elevation change, radius, and the fog. So we appreciate everything that you're doing, and please keep us in the loop because we'd like to just discuss this further and bring it to, you know, an equitable resolution. Thank you again.
You're welcome. Thank you. I especially like to thank the young people that came out and, you know, stuck their neck out for that.
Thank you. We appreciate your attention.
Anyone else for public comment? Okay. Seeing none, we can move on to, don't have any minor approvals this evening. Reports of boards, committees, and commissions. Did I see Peggy Driscoll in the audience for the planning commission report? Anyone who wants to come forward can certainly do that if they'd like to. Hello, Ms. Driscoll.
Hello. Good evening. Peggy Driscoll, Chair of the Newtown Township Planning Commission, here to give you a synopsis of our October eighteenth meeting. We had five zoning hearing applications, first one being David and Kelly Marshawn at fifty-one Maple Lane. The applicants are seeking a variance to construct a two-car garage in the same location as an existing one-car garage with a side yard setback of seven feet three inches where twenty-four is required. This is an existing nonconformity, which the new garage will maintain. The commission recommends that the board take no action on this application. Next, we had Michael Picaretti at Eight Gray Circle. The applicant is seeking a variance for increased impervious surface of thirty-point-three percent where twenty-five percent is the maximum to install an in-ground swimming pool and patio. There is an existing variance for a rear yard setback, but that proposed patio has not been built. The commission recommends that the board take no action. Next, we have Applebee's at Two West Road. The applicant is seeking a variance for impervious surface of sixty-point-eleven percent where sixty-point-zero-four percent is the maximum permitted by a prior variance and for a setback of fifteen feet, ten inches where twenty feet is required to install a paver patio and the lawn, where the tables have been used throughout COVID. The commission recommends the board take no action. Next, we had KJ Med LLC at Twelve Penns Trail. The applicant is seeking variances for parking relief to provide one hundred and twenty-five parking spaces, where one hundred and forty-one spaces would be required for medical use and for signage relief for three wall-mannet signs, for two monument signs, height of nine feet and eight and a half feet, where five feet is the maximum. The commission recommends that the applicant consider reducing the height of the monument signs to eight and a half feet and recommend that the Board of Supervisors take no action on this application. Next, we had the Mattress Warehouse at Fifty West Road. The applicant is seeking a variance for a wall-mannet sign of forty square feet where twenty square feet is the maximum for a retail store in the Newtown Shopping Center. The commission advised the applicant to attempt to reduce the overall size of the letters from eighteen inches to sixteen inches and recommends that the board take no action on this application. With the two signage applications, the members did discuss the need to be more flexible to promote successful business in our shopping centers and our business commons. For public comment, we had Philip Di Amori, a zoning hearing applicant, whose application had been reviewed at the September twentieth meeting, asked to clarify some concerns the commission had expressed at an earlier view. Next, we had the Newtown AOP, the Archdiocese of Philadelphia, at four-thirty-five Dorm Road Preliminary, its final plan for land development. The commission reviewed this plan for a detached cluster development of forty-five homes and recommended the supervisors approve the plan, subject to compliance with the review letters of CCAST engineers, Remington and Vernick engineers, and the Newtown Emergency Services. We also recommend that the supervisors ask for permission to allow the Joint Historic Commission to visit the site and document any existing historic structures before issuing demolition permits. And lastly, we have the Joint Comprehensive Plan, the commission reviewed Principle One, which is promote smart growth and its strategies and actions. We discussed the population data used to develop the plan and noted that with the two major developments of Arcadia and the Newtown AOP, we have met more than half of the projected new housing needs already. We agree that as a commission, we would keep this principle in mind when we review residential subdivisions of properties. And that was all we had. Do you have any questions?
That was a lot.
Yeah, we were busy.
Going back to your thought or your request, your note about recommending supervisors ask for permission to allow Joint Historic Commission to visit and document the site?
Yes.
Would we need to have an action from the board on that, or do they just ask administratively?
No, we'd probably leave that up to the applicant to work with the JHC.
Okay.
Okay. I know Craig is here from the JDC. I think he had a couple comments he'd like to make about it.
Okay. Also a planning commission member, so, yeah.
Also planning commission.
Craig Deutsch. Yeah, just in regards to this, I understand that there was an agreement for toll to develop this area, and I'm asking if they make sure that they go through the full permitting process. Pulling a demo permit would require them to go to the JHC, period. Upon going to that JHC, there might be a designation of something historic, there might not, but to go through the process, as I think in the language of settlement says, a demo permit needs to be pulled. And I ask the township to stand behind that a hundred percent, along with every regulation that is along that process of pulling a permit. That's all.
As long as we're following the settlement agreement, I think we'll be okay. Mr. Sandro, you have any problem?
No, that's correct.
Okay. I think the settlement agreement's pretty clear. It says, "Pull a permit." If a permit needs, and there's a historic building there or something, well, then we'll have to discuss that. have to discuss that.
Okay.
But the first step is doing the work of a permit.
Okay.
Appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Greg.
Any other questions?
Any other questions for Peggy?
There was just one thing about the mattress factory signage. It's really king size. But I noticed on the drawings, and I'm not an architectural engineer, but there was some indication of LEDs behind the sign and I don't know how that impacts our signage ordinance regarding LED lighting.
I think they were backlit, like the other lights, the other signage in the中山中心 center. Is that correct, Hannah?
I don't recall off Hannah. Did reference LED lighting, but yeah, I do think it was sort of a backlit situation.
Yep.
It's totally permissible then.
LED is not, but the backlight, the backlight is, yes.
Well, I don't understand. What do you mean by LED is not?
Well, it's, it's back, the, they're proposed, let me put my glasses on, signage is backlit like the other, similar to the other lighting in the.
It's not a sign made out of LEDs.
Correct.
I get it.
Not a visual flashing sign.
Yeah, yeah.
It was like a light in there behind them.
Thank you for the classification. That's all. Thank you.
Okay.
We got it.
Anyone else?
I think we're good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And the review continues with the comprehensive plan. All right. Any other, I have nothing to report this evening. Mr. Vice Chair, do you have anything to report?
Nothing to report.
Ms. Assistant Secretary, Assistant Treasurer, do you have anything to report?
I attended the Fire Association meeting on Monday night, which discussed the 2023 budget and the upcoming capital fund purchases. That's all I have.
Okay. Mr. Clabro, anything? Mr. Davis?
Yes, I have the park and rec report for this evening.
Great, thank you.
Thank you to all Newtown Business Commons for sponsoring the Halloween Parade. We'd also like to thank all Newtown Township departments for helping make the event a big success. Pre-registered today for the following upcoming programs, there's intermediate Tai Chi, learn to draw and sketch, and art with Ms. Lee. Some other upcoming events, currently selling discounted sesame very funny Christmas tickets, which will be sold until November 7th. If you're interested in those tickets, contact the Township Park and Rec Department. And lastly, save the date, our annual holiday craft fair is Saturday, November 19th from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. here at the Township Building. And that's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Davis. All right. We're, no public hearings, so we are into land development. Mr. Sanders, are you?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first item under land development this evening, and the only item, is consideration of a preliminary and final plan approval for Provco Pine Good Newtown LLC. This is for a proposed Wawa on the Route 332 bypass on Lower Silver Lake Road. Mr. Van Louveney is here with his client, Mr. Van Louveney.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sanders. It's been a long road to get to this point. I thought for the benefit of those who may be watching on television who have an interest based on all the recent publicity that this application has gotten, that I would review how we got here and then briefly review what we have to discuss tonight and what we do not have to discuss tonight. This is not, of course, an application to determine whether or not a Wawa should be permitted on this five-acre site at the southeast corner of Lower Silver Lake Road in the bypass. That's already been determined. Special exception has been granted. Special exception was not appealed. So the use approval for the Wawa has been granted. The only thing that remains to be determined is the plan pursuant to which it will be developed. And I think it's important, as we go through the discussion tonight, that everybody remembers that. This is not, are we going to vote for the Wawa or against it? We're looking objectively at a series of land, or a section, a series of land development plans to determine whether they meet your ordinances. And that's the only issue before you tonight. By way of background, you know, this project started out essentially as a cooperative project with the Township Supervisors Blessings four years ago. I met with Kirk Ferguson when he was Township Manager on March 13th of 2018 with Mr. Cooley and Mr. Bada. We took a sketch plan in and we said, my client said, we're interested in developing a Wawa on that corner, but we'd like to do this in an amicable way. And Mr. Ferguson made a suggestion. He said, file a sketch plan and we can take it through the, to the Board of Supervisors for their initial review. He also made a suggestion that since we only have one real neighbor, and that's the Crossing Community Church across the street, across Silver Lake Road, that we meet with the church just to make them aware of the project so that if they were interested in following along as we attempted to work these issues out, the church could comment. And we knew that they would be perhaps more impacted than anybody by this project and felt that it was important, as did Mr. Ferguson, that we meet with them. On March 27th of 2018, we submitted a sketch plan. That sketch plan was discussed at a workshop of the Board of Supervisors on May 14th, 2018. At the conclusion of that work session, the board encouraged me to draft a proposed amendment to the JMZO and forward it to the Township Solicitor for review. I did that. We submitted it and that was subsequently reviewed by the Township Consultants. Comments were received, sketch plan was revised and resubmitted. On September 19th of 2018, I received an email from Mr. Lewis advising that in order to move the plan forward, the Township staff and Solicitor had thought that the right way to proceed was to have Michelle Fountain complete a draft of the revised ordinance. We recognized that that was going to be a lengthy process, knowing that we ultimately have to go through the Joint Zoning Council and then be adopted by not only this township, but Wrightstown Township and Upper Makefield Township. Provco and its consultants and me, or and I, monitored the drafts of the ordinance. They were all given to us for review and comment. Process moved slowly, let's just say that. After waiting more than a year and not seeing a final product, we found a precautionary substantive challenge to the validity of the ordinance contending that the JMZO did not make provision for the convenience store with motor vehicle fuel sales, which is what we had proposed and what the ordinance that was being worked on was proposing. We were only concerned to be certain that we weren't effectively zoned around by the ultimate product that may result from the Joint Zoning Council. And that had been after a year with the township working on its draft. We put that challenge on hold. It's still pending. We've never pursued it. We were still hoping and still hope tonight that we're going to be able to work everything out to our mutual satisfaction. On September 23, 2020, another year had passed. That's the night that this township voted to approve Township Ordinance 2020-0-3, which is also known as JMZO Ordinance 2020-02. Newtown Township Board, this board approved that ordinance by a 3-2 vote, as most of you probably know. You were the last of the three municipalities to sign it and it became the, that, result of that was to permit the, the use that became use J30, which permits a diesel motor vehicle fueling with a convenience store use as a combination use. Among, it's permitted not only in the OR district in Newtown, but also in, on certain districts within the other two municipalities that comprise the jointure. The ordinance required the submission of a special exception. We applied for a special exception. We also applied for variances from the signage regulations. In our initial drafts of the ordinance, we recognized, as I think the planners did and as I assumed that the Board of Supervisors did, that the ordinances, the JMZO signage provisions would prevent, effectively prevent any signs on the proposed Wawa. So we asked for variances in our zoning hearing board application. We appeared on April 28th of 2021 before the Board of Supervisors at a meeting, or actually, we were put on the agenda and the discussion was limited to your discussion and that is, were you going to send your solicitor to oppose the special exception, to oppose the variances, or neither, or both? The upshot of that meeting was a resolution that passed, if I recall it right, by five to zero, to oppose, send the solicitor to oppose the variances that were requested, primarily signage variances, but not to oppose the special exception. We had a hearing, or a series of hearings after the, after that April 28th board meeting, before the zoning hearing board, the township actively participated, putting on testimony opposing the sign variances in accordance with your directive. On November 4, 2021, almost a year ago, the zoning hearing board issued a decision and order that granted the special exception to permit the proposed Wawa on this site. The decision denied the requested variances. I think it's important to note, this board did not appeal the grant of the special exception. It did appeal, or Provco appealed, the zoning hearing board decision denying the variances. That appeal was filed on November 30th of last year and it is also still pending. Land development plans were then filed by Provco on and accepted for review on December 8th of 2021. We're now about three and a half years into this process. We had some scheduling difficulties. We were waiting for review letters. We had some scheduling difficulties in the spring. There was consideration, requests made that we considered granting extensions so that the plan did not come before the board in the summer when a lot of people were on vacation and everybody, I assume everybody on the board wanted to participate. So in discussions with Mr. Lewis, we agreed, Provco agreed, that in the spring, what it would do would be to revise its plans and resubmit the plans as preliminary final plans so that we could make up some of the delay that we had experienced by way of scheduling. We ultimately were scheduled for consideration by the board last month, as you recall, and at the last minute, we decided in view of the controversial subject matter that you had on the agenda before us, that we expected would take a substantial amount of time, we removed ourselves from the agenda. That's the sole reason that we removed ourselves from the agenda. During all the, to this time period, Provco continued to revise its land development plan. We continued to receive review letters. We continued to make plan revisions. And tonight, I'm happy to say that we're here with a plan that I believe is probably the cleanest plan that I have ever seen or ever experienced, one of my clients produce in the course of the 50 years that I've been practicing. And I'm going to go through that, the review letters, because I think it's important that we know exactly what the issues are and then we'll go back and discuss the, what issues remain or what discussion items, I will call them for want of a better term, remain. We have a series of review letters. The engineering review letter from Remington and Vernick is, last one was dated September 20th of 2022. My review of that letter, and I assume that you have all reviewed it, suggests that there are no engineering issues yet to be resolved. The comments do, of course, indicate that there are outside agency approvals that are still required, but, and that there are two waivers, which were asked for in a letter submitted by our project engineers, Bowler. Aside from that, and we'll discuss the waivers later in a few minutes. We also have a Remington and Vernick engineers' traffic review dated September 20th, 2022. This is also a third review. The engineering review was the third review. The traffic review is the third review. And my review again indicates that there are no issues of a traffic nature to discuss, no ordinance-based issues. We have a letter dated September 20, 2022 from Fire and Rescue. It states that all of the items that had been previously raised have been satisfactorily addressed, so we have no issues there. We have a CKS engineers' letter dated August 31, 2022. And in that, Michelle Fountain raises three issues that we can discuss after, I'm going to discuss with you after the discussion concerning the waivers. Each of those issues, or each of those discussion items, refers you to a section of the ordinance that gives you, purports to give you discretion to provide design input with respect to certain plan elements. The design and materials of the trash and dumpster enclosure is one of those items, the first one that Michelle raises. The second one is architectural plans for the fuel area canopy in the building. And the second and third item, which is, which was somewhat unfortunate in the final draft of the ordinance, there's an ordinance provision that says that canopies that are greater than 60 feet in length and 3,000 square feet in size may be allowed in the OR zoning district if approved by the Board of Supervisors. Again, no objective criteria in the ordinance that you're supposed to apply to determine how to exercise your discretion. The dimensions of the canopy that are proposed on our plan, which provides for six multi, multiple dispensers, multiple fuel dispensers, or 12 fueling stations, is, is the minimum that is required to cover those fueling stations that are permitted by right. We've shown on the plans, and Mr. Korzak from Bowler can bring up a plan or discuss it in detail if you want, but what we show is that 3,000 square feet will cover four of the six permitted fueling disp, fuel dispensers. What we've asked for and we've shown is a canopy of 55 feet by 96 feet, 5,280 square feet, which again is the minimum that will cover the six fueling stations that are permitted. I won't make comment tonight on those ordinance provisions that are impacted by those design, those three design issues. I believe they're probably invalid. We haven't challenged them and they're invalid only because they give you discretion over design issues without any guidance. But we think we have reasonable explanations for what we have shown you and we'll explain that to you as we go on. I'd like next to address the waiver issue. As I said, there are only two waivers on this plan that are required. The first is the requirement for, is that the ordinance says that you have to plan in two steps, land development plans, preliminary, and final. We've asked for a waiver. That was a subject of the discussion that I had with Mr. Lewis last spring. And as a result of that, we continued to revise the plan through the spring and the summer so that it meets all the final plan requirements. I know that you know that you have often granted and routinely granted in connection with non-residential projects, that waiver that we're, we need in order to have you process this as a preliminary final plan. I would say that if you decide not to grant that waiver for some reason, I can't understand what it would be, the fact of the matter is that that doesn't give you the ability to deny the plan. You still have to act on the plan as a preliminary plan. So that shouldn't be an issue of determining whether or not you approve or disapprove the plans. It's only a question of whether you would grant preliminary, preliminary approval or preliminary final approval, or I suppose you could try to find a way to turn down, turn the plan down as a preliminary plan. The other issue, the other waiver, and you've had this waiver many times in the township, I know, is the issue of the separation of, between the edge of the parking and the building itself. We show a minimum of eight feet of separation, consistent with every Wawa that you've ever visited. The parking is separated with a series of large bollards. The parking is separated with a series of large bollards. The bollards are installed for traffic safety reasons, frankly. Every once in a while, we open up the newspaper or see a report on the news about a wayward car driving through a storefront in the city somewhere. That's a concern. Your ordinance doesn't require any safety provisions. It just says, without articulating a reason, that the parking should be separated from the store by 20 feet. We've asked for the separation of eight feet minimum with the bollards, and the reason for that is pedestrian safety, for one. Safety to protect people who may be in the store from accidental crashes. The bollards have a very effective safety deterrent. And also, to prevent pedestrian accidents 20 feet away. Gives a lot of room for, if you were 20 feet away, you'd have to protect that with a curb. And the curb is not convenient for customers. 20 feet provides a lot more opportunity for you to get rained on on a rainy day if you jump out of your car to go into a store. And there's no, as I said, there's no justification in the ordinance for the separation. I would note, and I did a little research just to see what you did. I visit the Village at Newtown Shopping Center frequently, and it occurred to me that I know that there are lots of places in that center where there is not 20 feet of separation. And I looked at the plan for Village at Newtown redevelopment, and I noted that you granted the waiver that we're requesting in connection with that development. I also went back and looked at Goodnose Corner, another commercial development, and I noted among the waivers that were granted on that land development plan was the same waiver we're requesting here. So it's not foreign. This isn't the first time you've heard about it. And I think that the reasonableness of this waiver is known to all of you who have visited a Wawa, and I suspect that includes all of you. So those are the two waivers that are involved in this plan. I've talked about the reason for the canopy for our request that you exercise your discretion, which is given to you by the ordinance, to allow the six permitted pumps to be covered with our canopy. So we're asking that you, in your approval, agree to approve the canopy as it's set forth. The design issues with respect to the trash enclosure, I don't know if you even want to discuss those. We believe that they meet the intent of the ordinance. My clients say, if you don't like white, tell us what color you want, and you can have any color you want. That's not an issue with Provco. But if you have a preference, tell us what it is, and we'll change it. But I don't see that as a major design issue either. And I think those are really the only discussion items tonight. You may have other ones, but if you do, we'll be happy to address them. But I think that really is the sum total of the issues. We're not here to debate engineering issues. We're not here to debate improvements. We're not here to debate traffic signals. All those issues have already been reviewed by your consultants in review of our plans, and we've addressed them all. There's nothing left. So, we'd like to discuss the items that, if you have comments on any of these items, we're happy to listen to them, we're happy to give you our perspective. But this is a very clean plan. It seems to me that it's, there's no reason, there's no basis to turn the plan down for a use that's already been permitted and vetted by the zoning hearing board, been reviewed multiple times, and reviewed by the Board of Supervisors for over four years now. They've known this, you've known about the plan. You voted not to oppose the special exception request. This is a zoning hearing board in order to grant the special exception, had to determine that what we had demonstrated, our ability to comply with all of the objective criteria. We've now conformed to and complied with all of the ordinance criteria required for land development approval. We just don't see any basis to turn us down after having attempted to work with this township and its consultants, and the staff, and the board for four years now. We haven't pushed any of our challenges. We didn't ask, the ordinance was not adopted because we filed substantive challenge. We were well down the road. You'd already determined you were going to pass an ordinance, and we haven't pushed that issue. If we pushed the issue, we wouldn't even be here with some of these silly appeals that we have right now on signage, for example. We would have addressed that during the substantive challenge. We haven't pushed it. We've continued, you have a plan before you for the only Wawa in the United States that has no signs. We're adhering to everything you've done. We haven't pushed any of our litigation. I just, we were at a loss. We talked them on ourselves to figure out what issues are left. So if there are any left, please let me know what they are.
Mr. Sanders, how do we proceed? Do we take questions now, or do we?
Well, the board is certainly free to ask Mr. Van Leuvene questions and have a discussion before a motion is placed before it, certainly.
I can also advise you that Mr. Cooley and Mr. Bada, principals in Provco, are here. We have Matthew Hammond, our transportation engineer, if there are traffic-related questions. Jason Korzak and Travis North from Bowler are here. Jason is the project engineer. Travis is the expert in lighting and landscaping. So we're here. You don't have to listen to me. You can listen to my consultants if you need.
Okay. If I may proceed, I'll ask my two or three or four questions. I think they're all quick answers. One is about the dumpster area, and helping to decide what we want to do with that at our discretion, because I think that was one of the discretionary items. Is there, my main question is, is there a, there's an enclosure, and then there's a dumpster inside of that enclosure, and I'm guessing that the dumpster itself has a lid, a cover?
Why don't you take the microphone to Jason, if you would, please?
They won't be able to hear you on the TV.
I need to use the mic, Jason. There you go.
Yeah, okay. So, this is, I'm Jason Korzak with Bowler Engineering. Hello, everyone.
Yes.
This is the side of the building that has the trash enclosure. You can't see it because it blends in with the rest of the building materials. The only area that is different than the building materials proposed on this are the gates for the enclosure to open up. They're made of CPVC. There are no gates on the building. We're not going to put glass doors to enclose the dumpster. So, material-wise, CPVC, like I said, there's no gates anywhere else on the building. The garage door that's there for the loading of goods into the store, the man door, now those are typically made of aluminum, but typically also have a finish that's going to be very similar to a vinyl that will be similar to the enclosure gates on the front of the enclosure, front and rear of the enclosure.
But there's no roof on the dumpster area at all?
There's no roof on the dumpster.
No roof on the enclosure.
On the enclosure.
There's a roof on the dumpster.
Yes, a lid, yeah.
And again, if you would like to see a different color, you're painting on a white canvas, we can make any color you want.
Something that blends in, that matches, matches the store. Excuse me. All right. And the next question I have was lighting. And there was, I think, somewhere in the process, a question about lighting. I just want to make sure that-
There were, at one point, and I think the board may be aware of this, and I have this. There was an issue raised as to whether the lighting was 12 inches above the lower-
Yes, that's exactly right.
12 inches above the lower part of the canopy. We submitted a plan, Jason, did you just put that up there? All right. We submitted a plan showing what we were proposing. It was determined that that plan should be reviewed by your zoning officer, Mr. Italia. Mr. Italia then issued a letter, and his letter indicated that, in his opinion, our lighting, this lighting, conformed with the requirements of the ordinance, the lighting as shown here, and our plan shows that.
Because there was a question at one point, I just wanted to get it clarified tonight. The landscaping, I'm hopping around here a little bit. There was some additional landscaping added, I think, in the last couple of months?
Yeah, and Mr. North is our landscape architect, and Mr. North can address any questions, but we did add additional landscaping, that is correct.
And that was the main reason to buffer, I guess? And where was that added?
Among the parking areas on the side of the vehicle.
Talking to the mic, Travis, you know my art. Go ahead.
So the question was about additional landscaping. My name is Travis North. I'm a landscape architect registered in Pennsylvania. The additional landscaping was added to fulfill a requirement for landscape area that is applied for the requirement for parking area. And CKS's comment was specifically that we had allocated the area, but some of it was grass or other things. And their comment, at which we had addressed, was to provide additional woody plant material to fill out the area that we were applying to the parking area.
Okay. And could you show again where that is? Where was added?
So the area in question was flanking either side of the parking area adjacent, not adjacent to, but across from the canopy areas. There were some islands that were entering in at the entrance and exit drives where there was some lawn area previously, and we had filled those areas in with additional woody plant material.
Okay. So some of the landscaping was on Lower Silver Lake Road?
Correct. It belonged to Kerbal.
And then some on the opposite side?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. I just wanted to make sure I knew where it was, and that I was reading it properly. Two others. The canopy size, I think you just, you know, Mr. Van Leuvene addressed. I guess I'd rather have people be able to stay dry while they're pumping gas than have four or the six pumps covered and not. And then lastly, and this may come after we have a motion, I just want to make sure that I knew, I kind of knew what the conditions, some things would be conditional, and if I counted them properly, there's a PennDOT Highway occupancy permit. And Mr. Sanders can tell me if I got any of these wrongs too. But DEP permit and a Newtown Artisan Water.
The planning, there'd be sewage facilities, planning approval, and a quality management permit associated with it. NPD, right?
Yep.
NPDES permit, which would be required. Approval from Newtown Artisan Water Company. And obviously, each of those approvals for the provider of sewer service and water service would require development agreements, posting a financial security agreement. Same with the highway occupancy permit that would be issued by PennDOT. We'd be required to post a letter of credit with PennDOT for those improvements. But those are kind of standard, I'll call them standard conditions, but yes, they all apply. All required outside agency permits would have to be obtained.
I just wanted to make sure that I caught them all.
Well, I think you did, but I'd be willing to say all required outside agency permits that are required would be obtained. We're not going to start construction without approval, so.
Okay. So I'll open it up to other board members. Mr. Vice Chair?
Can you tell me what the proposed hours of operation are?
Yes. Seven days a week, 24 hours a day.
You must be aware that our ordinance says that the Board of Supervisors may limit the hours of operation if a residential use is located within 750 feet of the subject property line?
I'm very much aware of that, and we believe that that does not apply. And I can explain that.
Can I have, wait a minute. Can I have the images that I submitted put up on the screen, please? I think you could see that there is a residential use that's well within 750 feet of that property. And I know that a neighbor of that, of the people who live there, who knows them for eight years, had visited them, and it is a family with children. So it is residential use, and it's located well within 750 feet. So the board, if it wants, can limit the hours of operation.
I disagree with your conclusion and your reading of the ordinance, and I can explain.
How can I read it? How can it be more clear? The Board of Supervisors may limit the hours of operation if a residential use is located within 750 feet of the subject property line. How can it be more clear?
What is located within 750 feet of the property line is a church use.
No, no, it's a residential use. People are living there. It's a family. The church rented it out. Therefore, it's a residence.
The church rents it out. I have a letter that I'm happy to submit. We knew from the folks at the church that someone from the township, and we weren't sure who, and I don't know that the church knows who, had been over on that property and asking questions. I contacted Mr. Karikappa, who some of you may know, who is the counsel to the church. I requested a letter to make sure that everyone had the facts concerning the use. My view is that a use, the fact that there is a residence on the property does not mean that the property is devoted to a residential use.
It doesn't say anything about the property being a residential use. It doesn't say the whole property needs to be residential use. It says if there's a residential use, there is a residential use.
That's your opinion.
I'm not interested in that letter. Well, I disagree with your opinion. You seem to want a variance and a waiver for everything. Like, for example, 16 pumps are, our ordinance calls for a maximum of 16 pumps for that size. Yet, you contest that. Again, something we're reading wrong with our ordinance, or something. We don't know what we're doing. You appeal that zoning hearing board, and you can, even if you approve the plan, you're going to continue to fight for 18 pumps and when our ordinance calls for a maximum of 16. And then you're talking about the signage. You said the signage was a silly, silly thing. I think I quoted you directly, is that correct?
I think that, what I said is that your decision, and I'll say it again-
Can you read it back? Did he say silly?
I'm not disputing what I said, and I believe it to be the case. The idea that you-
Well, I don't think residents of Newtown think it's silly to prevent signage on the bypass.
Can you ask him a question, other manager?
But that is not relevant to the issue tonight, Mr. Mack. Or is the issue of the pending appeal relevant to the approval of this land development plan, which does not require any variances?
I believe that if we approve this plan, you are going to continue to fight for that signage, and eventually, you're going to wear us down and get it. And eventually, you're going to get the 18 pumps that you want. It's going to be part of the plan, unless, do you intend to withdraw your appeal from the zoning hearing board decision?
Not going to address that tonight.
The answer is no then, right?
We'll just make a determination, Mr. Mack, but you have a plan in front of you that complies with your ordinances.
No, it doesn't.
Well, you just, that, no, that's not true.
Well, right away, the canopy size does not comply. And you're saying, again, that we don't know what we're talking about when we limit the canopy size.
I missed, I missed the point you're making. The issues that are in front of you-
You want a waiver for the canopy size, right?
We're not asking for a waiver. You have the right to modify it. Our plan shows the permitted canopy. We are certainly allowed to ask you for approval for a larger canopy. The ordinance gives you discretion, or purports to give you discretion. I said I may not agree with whether or not that's lawful or not, but that's what the ordinance says. You can't deny the plan because we asked for something that we're entitled under the ordinance to ask you for.
Does Mack have any other question?
And ultimately, the question of the hours of operation is, I understand, that ultimately becomes a question of how do you interpret the ordinance? And that's a legal question, ultimately.
It ultimately comes to the protection of that family that is living there because recently, there have been a wave of robberies, armed robberies, of Wawa stores in Bucks County, by the way, not just Philadelphia. Talking about criminals coming to Bucks County. Hold on a minute. You know, we're going to have to have our police out there, and that family may be, you know, subject to, you know, somebody running away from the police, taking over their home. That's a family living there. And the hours of operation, in my opinion, should be limited, as some of these other Wawas in Bucks County have started to limit their hours and only have operation between five and midnight.
I'll make two comments in response to that. Number one, the property and the residence that you're talking about is owned by the church, and in this letter, if you read, you haven't read it yet, probably because you've been looking at me most of the time, the.
I'm looking at you.
The letter.
You looking at me? You looking at me?
Yeah, I'm looking at you too, yes.
Is everybody else, you looking at me?
The, the letter indicate, all I'm going to say is that if it matters to anybody on this board, the church explains that there are three rental units on the property, they tell you where they are, what they're used for, they state that they are all an integral part of the church use, and they talk, they say that they, the church, the owner of the property and the owner of the house in question, have no objection to the 24/7 operation. Having said that, you certainly can try to impose hours of operation if you choose to, that are different. We have the right to appeal that, but that is not a basis to deny the plan either.
Well, it's part of.
You can't deny the plan, you can impose the limit of operation.
It's part of the plan or not for 24-hour operation.
The plan is for a Walmart with gasoline. We propose 24/7 hours of operation. That is not a plan, that is a proposal. That doesn't give you the right to deny the plan. If you disagree, you haven't even exercised your discretion yet, how could you decide to turn the plan down? The answer is not to turn the plan down, the answer would be to propose to limit the hours of operation.
Well, I was just seeing what your opinion of if we did decide to do that, and it seems like, you know, you would contest that.
If you get a majority of people who approve the plan, subject to that condition, fine, then we'd have to make a decision. But it's not a basis to turn the plan down.
There's also, part of the plan has to do, and I think somebody's here from the Environmental Advisory Council that may like to make a statement regarding the impact on the environment of this plan, including a berm area and so on, use of, I believe, of grease and oil trap maintenance, native versus non-native plants, oversized berm, and so on. So, I would like Jan Philios from the Environmental.
That'll have to wait till public comment.
Shouldn't that be done after we make a motion?
Yes, that's public comment.
Okay, sorry about that.
Make sure to bring you up, Jan, but, okay, we good? All right, Ms. Snyder.
Hi. I haven't been here for much of the discussion of Wawa, so you'll forgive me if I have certain questions.
Not a problem.
Are you familiar with Ready for 100 climate principles? That's something that we are all striving to achieve as we see climate change coming over.
Well, may I ask you a question? Is that part of a township ordinance?
I don't know, like I said, I have questions that I think I would like answers to. I'm not sure what exactly is in the ordinance, as I said, this is my first meeting with Wawa, so.
All right. We, to my knowledge, I don't know if anyone is familiar with it, my, my point would be that if it is not a township ordinance or regulation, it's not an issue with respect to which we are required to comply, nor would it be a basis to turn the plan down.
Are you, you're going to have one charging station, is that correct?
One charging station proposed that will serve two, two vehicles.
So, the future is obviously going to be electric, and you're putting in all these gas pumps and not even taking into account the, you know, the future of electric cars. I think that's something that's lacking in your plan.
And once again, yes, many townships are starting to impose those requirements in an ordinance. You're right, as a developer, we'd have discretion to do that, but again, unless it's an ordinance requirement, it can't serve as the basis for plan denial.
I know that this is not the traffic portion of this, of this hearing.
Well, there are traffic issues, there's traffic, traffic can be relevant, we have plans that impact the road network.
The last traffic study that we have received is basically from 2016. I really haven't seen anything that was updated. If there is, I'd truly like to see it.
Well, there, there is, I'll have Matthew Hammond, our traffic engineer with Traffic Planning and Design, address your question and answer any questions you have about traffic.
Sure. Good evening, Matt Hammond, again with Traffic Planning and Design. There has actually been multiple versions of the traffic study that was completed. I don't know what the 2016 date you referenced, I do know there's a traffic study dated August 20th, 2018 that was done, that was subsequently revised for a traffic study of February 21st, 2022, that is the latest traffic study that was done, and was submitted to the township for, for review and approval.
Okay. Is there a reason that you will not change the orientation of the building like the Bucks County Planning Commission has suggested?
Yes.
Because what you're doing is changing, you know, the beauty of this town to have, you know, an ugly building on the bypass, which could be remedied by switching the orientation of the building.
The reason is that we have a client we represent. The client has made a decision that this is the appropriate orientation. We've spent, the township has seen this plan for four years now. Bucks County Planning Commission is advisory only, we're not bound, and you're not bound by anything they say in their review letters. At this point, we've worked on this plan now for four years, we've addressed all of your review comments, and we have what we consider to be a plan that is bulletproof, and we're not going to go back and spend a year going through the development and reengineering. And it sounds simple to say, well, just pick up the two buildings and reverse them, but it's not that simple, I can assure you. It would involve substantial engineering, reengineering, would probably bring up some other issues that we haven't even been able to begin to think about.
I'm certainly not saying it's simple, but I know that when I met with Mr. Cooley very early in the, when I got, after I got elected, you know, he said he wouldn't even think of it, so.
That's because he knows that Wawa wouldn't think of it at the time. Right, Mike, do you want to say anything further on this issue? I wasn't there, so I'm not.
Good evening, members of the board, Michael Cooley from Profco. Ellen, I do recall our conversation, and I believe my response was that I, I have no particular preference to the orientation of the plan, and I would certainly bring it up with my client. It is my client's pure discretion as how they want to orient the plan for their operations.
I know you're not thinking about climate change like I am. There's an opportunity for you to actually put solar panels on the roof of the building to try to address climate change in the little way that you can. Would you ever consider doing something like that?
I think I'm, what Mike will probably tell you, and I'm going to say it first because I believe and know the answer, is that Wawa controls the building design, ultimately anything that affects building design. Mr. Cooley, Profco, the property owner, has to have approved by Wawa before they can agree to it, so.
That's correct, and Wawa does build their own building, and they do their own design. So, I, I can't, there's no one here that can answer that question.
So, you, you couldn't ask that question and get an answer?
I could certainly ask them, yes.
We also, the one other thing I'd like to say is, of course, we have gas stations that have been here for decades in the township, and what I am worried about is the fact that you will undercut them as far as price of gas, or whatever the case may be, and I don't want to see our homegrown businesses lose business.
I have no comment to that.
Again, gasoline will be a thing of the past, not in the very near future, but it is in the future, and I just don't see any effort at all to address things that, I have an electric car. I want gas stations to start incorporating electric vehicle charging stations, one is not enough.
Yeah, so I can address that point. So typically, the way the charging stations work is that once Wawa has an approved plan, they put the plan out to their vendors. They work with Tesla, and they work with another electric charging station vendor. And the vendors get to choose if they want to install the charging stations at that location. So typically, what they've done is they've come back into the township, if their vendor chooses this location for charging stations, they will come back in and re-submit a plan to get those charging stations approved. So this, it's just not far along enough right now for them to make that decision. But they have been installing charging stations at most of their new stores.
Are you planning on using plants that are for phyto remediation in your, in your open areas, in your, where you're using your, you're going to have, what's the stuff you're using? I know you're using a certain plant mix for your retention basin. There are certain plants that can be used that absorb oil, are you planning on using any of them? I didn't see that in the plan.
So Travis can answer that question.
So, to answer the question, almost any and all plants can uptake soluble pollutants, including oils or things like that. Of course, the design of the facility is not intended to supplement other measures that are employed elsewhere on site to uptake oil, for example, as you had asked. It's really to treat stormwater and suspended solids, dust, particles, and things like that. But the plant material that's in there was selected specifically to handle inundation and pollutant removal, and it is in conformance with DEP regulations.
So they have extra deep roots?
Correct, correct, and the, what we have in the facility is, is a combination of meadow grasses and meadow wildflowers, which have very deep roots, five, six, seven feet sometimes. If the water is available at that depth, those roots will go as deep as they need to.
Thank you.
Yeah, just a few brief questions in regards, well, actually, can I ask how a car would navigate to get in, in and out of the Wawa? I mean, you just show with your fingers. Where's the, where's the bypass? Okay, and how would it come in off the bypass?
Okay, well, right turn in, or left turn on the Lower Silver Lake Road. This driveway here is a right-in-only entrance, okay? This is very convenient because it gives you direct access to the canopy area.
Okay.
Other entrance option, you can come down to the main full movement entrance, okay? Right in, now, anyone that's just going out or, or a hole here, or drink lunch, or whatever, doesn't want to go, doesn't want to take gas, they have the, the direct access to your entry of the building.
Okay.
Everyone leaving, gas can come down to the full movement driveway. You can take left outs, you can take right outs, and the driveway was designed, strategically designed to have lines with the church, across the community church driveway, to their main parking area.
Okay. So it's, it's one way in, but it's, it's two ways out?
One way in.
Okay, gotcha. In regards to the dumpster area, and you don't have to put that diagram up, in regards to the dumpster area, will there be any parking spaces facing the dumpster, so it'll be a clean area?
It'll be a clean area.
Okay.
It's fully composed from around the all sides, you've got the base in the front, you've got the brick side, and the actual floor side.
Okay.
The loading area of crashing trucks everywhere.
So it's only dedicated to the dumpsters and/or any kind of loading that is going to be done in there? In regards to the, the question about electrical stations, is there additional space available in case you want to put more than one? Is there an area in the parking lot that in the future, maybe, I don't know, five, 10 of them could go there?
I'd say this whole road here, well, spaces is.
Future, in the future? Okay.
Electric spaces can count towards the required, parking required.
Okay.
So any electrical space cannot consider a parking space. We do have sufficient parking, they're limited, you can park all those, and all those routine electric vehicle charging stations, it would still be going to require parking.
Okay. I, I, I hear all the talk about oil and, and things like that. This is, would there be a disposal of any kind of oil? Because this is not a, a service station where there will be oil changes or things like that. But in regards to if I come there and I need to get a, a couple quarts of oil and put them in my car, is there a dedicated disposal area that I could throw those empty containers in? Like a recyclable type of situation?
There will be recyclable, there will be recyclable receptiles around the parking area in by the canopy, typical of other Wawa, but the smallest oil.
Can you use the mic?
Or point the microphone in your direction.
There you go.
Yeah. There is not, there is not an area to dispose oil on the site, no. Typically, if you're buying a quart of oil, you're putting it in your car, and you can recycle the, the plastic container.
Okay.
Or.
Well, that's what I, I'm sorry, that's what, that's what I meant, I don't mean I'm going to change my oil in the, in the parking lot. In, in regards to the, I guess, the 20 feet to eight feet, there'll be bollards. Now, does, does the eight feet also take in the calculation, the, I guess, the frontage of, there's usually a sidewalk in front of every Wawa. Would that be part of the eight feet calculation? And then also, there's usually a line where a car parks up to, and then there's usually some sort of space within that, that line? Is that, is that all calculated in the eight feet that's going to be the distance?
Yeah, yes, well, just to be clear, too, the eight-foot portion of the sidewalk is along the, what I'll call the northeastern side of the building, plan right. The front sidewalk will be 13 feet wide. More heavily traffic with the canopy out front, and then the rear sidewalk will be 10 feet wide.
Okay. Now, now, you know, there's, there's talk about people getting out of their cars, raining, they don't want to get wet. Will there be an overhang in front of the, in front of the sidewalk that's there, so?
Yep, there is an overhang at the front and rear of the store.
Okay. Let me just think here. I, I think that's, that's all I have right now. Now, now, based on, I guess, Mr. Van Luvene, based on if it's approved tonight, some of the questions that were asked here about hours of operation or so, that's something that can be discussed in the future?
Well.
We're not going to make those decisions tonight, is that correct?
If you believe that you have the discretion to, in other words, if your interpretation of the legal question is consistent with Mr. Mack's, then you would have discretion to impose hours of operation tonight.
Now, could, could discretion of hours of operation happen at any time during the course that this Wawa may be open? What if?
Well, Wawa itself exercises its discretion from time to time to modify hours of operation depending on individual circumstances. But that's not Mr. Cooley's decision, that's, that's a Wawa decision.
Okay. So. What's the, what's the hours of operation of the, of the Richborough Wawa? Is that 24/7?
I don't know what they currently are. I know they did just amend some of the, a couple stores in Bucks County recently, and I don't know exactly which ones and what the hours are.
Okay, but it's something that can be amended. I mean, what if it starts off at 24/7 and then realizes, eh, it's not such a good idea? Wawa would take into consideration amending the hours of operation?
I think they'd certainly take anything into consideration.
Okay. I think that's all I have. I would just, if I can, ask Mr. Sander, I know Mr. Van Luvene gave us a brief history, but for maybe the board's edification here, or education, rather, would you explain the history and the process that, that has gone through to get us to this point, just so that we're refreshed of this?
Yeah, ve- very briefly.
Well, I'm sorry, I don't know if Mr. Davis.
I want to give my apologies.
Didn't he already go through that?
Didn't he already go through that earlier? Is there anything you would add to that?
Well, I would add that the requirement to provide for this use in the joint municipal zoning ordinance came from several challenges that were filed by Wawa's, one in Bucks County and one in Montgomery County. And both were successful in carrying the day, arguing that those zoning ordinances were unconstitutional because they did not provide for a specific convenience store, gas station, use. They might have provided for convenience stores and gas stations separately, but not this single use. Those ordinances were ultimately amended and Wawa's were brought there. When Wawa came here, we looked in our ordinance and said, "We don't have that kind of combined use." And that's when we set upon to ask Ms. Fountain, first Mr. Van Louvene, and then Ms. Fountain, to draft what ultimately became the E-30 ordinance pursuant to a municipal curative amendment. So that's the, what Mr. Van Louvene didn't mention was the impetus for the township to have to amend its ordinance to provide for this use.
And I only add that I didn't mention it because I wasn't sure what the impetus had been. I didn't participate in those meetings, obviously.
And this ordinance is jointure-wide, correct? This is where...
That is correct. And there are, as Mr. Van Louvene mentioned, areas in both Upper Makefield and Wrightstown on which convenience stores with gasoline fuel stations can be constructed.
Okay, thank you.
Let's let Mr. Davis go first, if he has any questions. Okay, Ms. Snyder, one more.
I was just informed that our planning commission never saw any updated traffic study. I'd like them to have that, please.
Well, they're not submitted by us to the planning commission. They come into the township, the tenants are distributed to your consultants. So we don't have, we're not in control of that particular aspect.
My God.
Can I have one other comment, please? Sure. Speaking of the planning commission, you are aware that the planning commission recommended that we not approve this plan. Are you aware of that?
Yes, I'm also aware that they didn't have any valid reasons to make that recommendation that were ordinance-based. And the planning commission, just like Bucks County Planning Commission, is only recommends to you, Mr. Mack, you're the ones who have to ultimately decide what you're required by law to do.
If I could add one thing, I believe it was a tie vote at the planning commission.
It's three to three, if I remember right.
Yes, and the issue of rotating the site was brought up at that May 14 meeting, May 14, 2018, a long, long time ago. So, you know, you've denied it ever since. And I know that you don't want to take into consideration the Bucks County Planning Commission, which was summarily dismissed by your attorney, Mr. Van Louvene. I think they were very impolite to the Bucks County Planning Commission.
My only comment was the Bucks County Planning Commission recommends, doesn't vote. And in this case, Mr. Cooley explained to you that Wawa makes its decision as to how to orient the site. If the ordinance had been written to say that in the case of a motor vehicle fueling station and store, that the canopy had to be to the rear of the property, then they wouldn't have had a choice. We would have had to make that decision. But that's not what the ordinance says. The ordinance does not try to tell a business how to orient the business.
All right. The other thing I noticed from your comments is that you couldn't answer a lot of questions. It's all up to Wawa. So we don't have Wawa here to answer some of these questions. And so you just say, "Well, it's up to Wawa. Wawa does this, Wawa does that." And we're not getting the answers to some of our questions.
Well, you're not getting answers because Wawa was consulted. On any issue that involves building orientation, where we have an issue with the ordinance, Wawa has to make a decision as to whether to comply with the ordinance or to ask for a variance or a waiver. And in this case, the issues that you're raising now are not issues that are ordinance requirements. And for that reason, we've proceeded, Mr. Cooley's proceeded, with the plan that you have in front of you through three or four rounds of revisions.
And also, if I may add, as Mr. Van Louvene said earlier, the use has been approved by your zoning hearing board. And what's before you tonight is the technical land development plans for preliminary and/or preliminary final approval of those plans.
All right. Before we open it up to public comment, maybe we should get a motion on the...
Yeah, I think that's a wise way to proceed, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Sanders?
I will frame a motion, and we can see if it is moved and seconded. If the board is of a mind, it would be a motion to grant preliminary and final land development approval for Provco Pine Good Newtown LLC for the development of tax parcel 29-10-42 at Route 332, the Newtown bypass, and Lower Silver Lake Road. The plans are dated November 30, 2021, last revised August 16, 2022, prepared by Bowler Engineering, and consist of 29 sheets. Plan approval is conditioned on the applicant's compliance with the following. One, compliance with the CKS Engineers Review Letter dated August 31, 2022. Two, compliance with the Remington and Vernick Engineers Review Letter dated September 20, 2022. Three, compliance with the Remington and Vernick Engineers Traffic Review Letter dated September 20, 2022. Four, prior to the signing of final plans and their being recorded, the applicant shall comply with all conditions set forth in the zoning hearing board's November 4, 2021 decision and revised order, as may be revised by the court during the current appeal. Five, prior to the signing of final plans and their being recorded, the applicant shall pay a fee in lieu of the dedication of open space in conjunction with the Newtown Parks and Recreation Letter dated April 7, 2022. Six, at the appropriate times required by the subdivision and land development ordinance, the applicant shall pay the traffic impact fee required by the SALDO. Seven, prior to the signing of final plans and their being recorded, the applicant shall enter into the required development, financial security, and stormwater operations and maintenance agreements with the township. Eight, prior to the signing of final plans and their being recorded, the applicant shall obtain all permits and approvals required from all agencies with jurisdiction over the project. Nine, prior to the signing of final plans and their being recorded, the applicant shall pay all outstanding fees and costs due to the township for plan review. In addition, the following waivers from the subdivision and land development ordinance are hereby granted. A, a waiver from Section 22-301.3 to allow preliminary and final plans to be treated as one submission where separate submissions are required. And B, a waiver from Section 22-514.9 to allow parking within eight feet of a building wall, where parking is prohibited within 20 feet of a building wall.
That is the motion? I mean, that is the...
Proposed, proposed motion.
Do we have a motion?
Yeah, that's acceptable to the applicant, I guess, for everything Mr. Sanders said. I'll make that motion.
We have a second. I will second it. How do we...
We have a motion in a second. I would start with board discussion, if any, on that motion, and then open it up to public comment on that motion.
If we have some input on the canopy, those three discretionary ideas, how does that get incorporated into the motion?
Well, if you want to revise that motion, then let me know. And we'll ask the motion maker to, if he would revise his motion, and the second maker to revise his second.
Okay. I plan to, once the motion is called for, I plan to vote in favor. I represent, I know there's a lot of people in the community that would like a Wawa. I know there's some that don't. I believe we've worked to create the E-30 ordinance. And I believe Wawa has submitted a plan that has tried to follow that ordinance. I recognize that our professionals have reviewed all the letters back and forth. There's been review letters and answers back and forth. I believe we're trying to support business. There will be jobs created there. I believe it's a good location. It's away from residences. We still may have something to resolve, and it may go to the court to decide whether there's a residence use there or not. I recognize that. But it's away from major communities of development. We have those three residences, maybe, at the church, depending on how a court would review that. It's also, at the present time, a low-use intersection, at least towards the Silver Lake side of that. I believe through the land development process, we, as a board, have more control rather than if this goes, gets decided by the court, we don't have as much control. And I believe that approving this saves us the expense of litigation and related costs going forward. So all those reasons, I plan on approving.
May I say something, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I believe that Wawa, or Provco, or whoever the heck is in charge here, is not making a good faith effort to follow our ordinance. And in fact, every step of the way has challenged the ordinance, even called certain things in the ordinance silly. And they have no respect for our laws and no respect for what our residents may not want, including the signage on the bypass, not to mention an unsightly view, talking about the intersection. There may be development further down the road on Lower Silver Lake Road. I know that Middletown has suggested a light on where the NAC is, what's that road called over there? When it crosses the bypass? Woodburn Road. And there's a development there. They want a light for the road that goes into Lower Silver Lake Road because they believe a lot of children will be trying to ride their bikes, and it'd be a very dangerous intersection there. And to say that that intersection at the bypass and Lower Silver Lake Road is underutilized, that's not going to be the case in the future. And it certainly is not the case on the other side of the road where many, many residents have complained about making left-hand turns and so on. It's a dangerous intersection. And I think having all this traffic will also go into Wawa and from Lower Silver Lake Road will have an impact even further on that intersection. Already, your traffic study has said that part of that intersection will be degraded to, I think it was D-level, which it said was adequate for an urban area. Well, welcome to the urbanization of Newtown. So that's my comment. Thank you.
Any other board comment?
I think you had a chance to make this Wawa way more environmentally friendly. I don't think you made any efforts to do so whatsoever. Yes, you have plants, native trees. I appreciate that. Other than that, I... There's not much to address climate change in the future. And I'm not down with that.
Any other board comment before we open it to public comment? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, let me say one thing about public comment. We do need to, A, allow Newtown residents to speak before non-Nutown residents. And secondly, we need to have people who comment. Please focus on the motion at issue. The motion is to approve this plan. This is not, is Wawa good or bad? This is not, is Wawa going to take over the world and be a corporate usurper? Please limit your comments to the plan that is before you and whether you believe that the motion that is made is advisable or not. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders. I was just going to say the same thing. So this is about the Newtown, the Newtown store. Yes, Ms. Filios.
Thank you. Jan Filios from the Environmental Advisory Council and Newtown. The EAC would like to have some input.
Can you move the microphone a little bit so...
A little closer? Is that better?
That's better.
Okay. The Environmental Advisory Council would like to share their perspective on some environmental concerns and green infrastructure opportunities as they relate to the proposed Wawa development. Another EAC member and I reviewed parts of the preliminary plan. The specific sheet number was C-701, a site plan showing the proposed stormwater system, including petroleum filters, a detention basin, a planting plan, and a 20-foot-high, approximately 20-foot-high berm. We considered several topics. It's not comprehensive, there are just some highlights. I'll go, I'll list them, and I'll just give a brief summary for each one. We looked at grease and oil trap maintenance issue. We looked at native versus non-native plant selection. We looked especially at the oversized, what we consider an oversized berm and its placement. We looked at the specifications for detention basin naturalization. And we want to bring up a new topic. The use of plants recommended for phyto remediation of petroleum process. And this relates to filtration of volatile compounds, which there will be. The first topic, grease and oil trap maintenance. The parcel in question slopes downhill along Silver Lake Road and is approximately five or more feet from Core Creek. And that distance will vary because the creek courses, it has a curving course. An impacted stream running through three or more townships. Core Creek is considered polluted in some measure for years now. A small feeder stream in the adjacent Provco-owned lot courses under Silver Lake Road, where it joins the creek and becomes part of a floodplain around the creek corridor. Further down the road, homes in Middletown use well water. Because of the proximity to streams and well water and a high water table, one should take extra precautions to provide protection from petroleum-based pollutants. There should be an approved schedule for routine maintenance of filter traps since there will definitely, excuse me, be gas and oil drippings. And careful monitoring is needed in order to avoid contaminating adjacent soils and groundwater. A specific timetable is not provided in the plan. And this has come up in other townships where some of the filters would get clogged, and then they would be dysfunctional. Number two, native versus non-native plant selection. The planting plan shows 438 trees and shrubs. And this was, we did this earlier this year, and this may have been before you changed the tree selection along the parking lot. I'm not sure of that. So this doesn't include what that change might have been. So this doesn't include what that change might have been. Ninety, ninety-one of these plant selections are non-native. Thirty-two trees are non-native. And I can give you this, fourteen zelcova are non-native, six London plane trees could have sycamore as a substitute. London plane is not native. Plus, there are twelve round-love sweet gums, which is a cultivar of a native, but this cultivar is sterile. So we would suggest using the straight species instead of this sterile which functions as a non-native. Fifty-nine shrubs are non-native, four heads juniper, and fifty-five taxus ass media are non-native. So in the interest of environmental sustainability, included native plants adaptability, better resistance to disease, and reduced need for fertilizers or pesticides, it is in all our best interests to have most native plants at this site. Number three, an over, an eighteen-to-twenty-foot oversized berm, and that's an estimate, because I think the height of that may vary. There is a proposed eighteen-to-twenty-foot-tall or higher berm on the west side behind the gas pumps and convenience store and adjacent to the utility line. The plan designates turf, turf grass for the berm. I have a cough drop. If somebody.
He stepped outside.
I'm sorry. All right. And if an eighteen-to-twenty-foot-high berm is installed with the proposed contours, then the slope created would be quite sleep, steep, excuse me, as much as fifty percent. The greater degree of the slope, the greater likelihood of stormwater runoff. The steeper the slope, the faster the water will travel, increasing the likelihood of flooding and erosion. In addition, shallow-rooted turf grass allows for less stormwater infiltration into the soil to replenish groundwater. Better alternatives might include a managed meadow with a staggered buffer of eastern white pines and deciduous trees. White pines can reach eighty feet in height and maturity, which is far higher than a twenty-foot berm as a visual buffer and would provide superior stormwater benefits and habitat benefits as well. Our Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection promotes the use of green infrastructure as a best practice management. Number four, the written plan proposes perennial turf grass in the detention basin, but the graphic drawing calls for a choice of wildflower mix. And I think you started to address that as a meadow mix. But anyway, that discrepancy needed clarification. The seed mixed, the best seed mix should be predominantly native grasses that are known to provide phytoremediation, phytoremediation activity for petroleum products. There needs to be a provision for mowing maintenance as well. Number five, phytoremediation is a process that uses various types of plants to stabilize or biologically change contaminants in the soil. In this case, specific plants that would reduce the pollutant effects of petroleum over time, specific species. The EAC can provide a list of native plants, grasses specifically, that are recommended for this purpose. In this case, it is native grasses in the detention basin that would act as preventative measure for petroleum leaks and spills. The use of phytoremediation for petroleum is for low concentrations only. These grasses have extensive, extensive roots which facilitate the process. So in summary, we would like an approved schedule of grease and oil trap maintenance. We would like all native plants. We would like to have the oversized size berm reconsidered because of the runoff. And we would like the plant selection for the detention basin to be changed to native grasses that are specifically suitable for phytoremediation. And number five, the use of plants recommended for mitigation of petroleum products is for low concentrations any, only. So, and I would very much like to give the.
That indeed was my question, if you had something to give them. If you had something in writing to give them, so, good.
The grasses are on the second page.
Okay. We can't hear you.
I'm sorry. I'm giving him a list of plants.
Yes.
Grasses that are specific, that can go into the detention basin.
Sure.
And when they are mature, microbes around the roots will have a chemical relation, can have a chemical relationship with petroleum products.
Yeah, my, my question was whether you gave him a list or not. My, my question was whether you provided a list. So thank you.
It's hard to hear.
Thank you.
It's like an echo.
Okay.
Yeah. Just another couple shoes, sheets, excuse me. One just shows that a native example of how a native grass may have roots that are six to nine feet. Okay?
Just make it as brief as possible because I'm sure there's a lot of people behind you who would want to speak.
They, they can't hear me?
No. We're saying please keep it as brief as possible.
I'm almost finished. I, I'm sorry, I can't hear well, Dennis.
Okay.
I just gave him two sheets and one is just an illustration of how a native grass can have roots that are many feet deep as opposed to turf grass, which is.
Yes.
Runoff.
We've got it.
And the other one is just an illustration of the floodplain being extremely adjacent to this property and that's why we're concerned about environmental aspects.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, please, don't forget to say your name.
Good evening. My name's Norm Seager. I live in Newtown. I'll try to be brief. Tonight, you're voting on changes, not to a gas station and a convenience store, but to a travel plaza. This huge plaza that's projected is as big as any on a turnpike here in New Jersey or on a New York State thruway. That's what we're adding to Newtown. So any supervisors who originally approved putting a Wawa there, you didn't do Newtown any favors. Increased traffic, increased crime, three-quarters of a million cars, their numbers, going into that station every year, trucks. And they say they don't cater to trucks. Trucks will take two hundred gallons, the dump trucks that pass by hundreds a day, take two hundred gallons. So who do you think, when they have the sign on two ninety-five that says, "Open twenty-four diesel"? I don't buy any diesel. I'm sure most of you don't buy diesel either. I want to address violence. And unfortunately, they haven't addressed security at these Wawas. And if anybody's listened to the news lately, at Wawa, crime has been rampant. In New York, in Philadelphia, they're closing stores, they're limiting hours in Bucks County. And what are we doing? We're opening a Wawa. My vote is no exception to anything that Wawa has proposed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello again, everybody. My name's Bradley Cooper. I'm a Newtown grant resident. I've been in Newtown since nineteen ninety-nine, since there's a lot of people here that might not heard me speak. I grew up here. I've been here, went to all the local schools, Newtown Elementary School, Newtown Middle School. Council Rock North, you have to say that now since they had to open up too because of how big everything got. And I even went to Bucks Community College. I've been in this area for a while. I've seen things change. Yakme go from Sycamore Street over to where it is in front of Durham Road with the whole big shopping center there. It is nice and a good addition to, you know, Newtown, whatever. But going on specifically this Wawa, whatever, I spoke about it, I can't tell you how many times or whatever, my grievances, my anger about the proposal or whatever. Wawa, when everybody was asking questions about the Wawa today, they gave you vague answers. They gave you answers that you want to hear or answers that this is what it's only allowed to be. You can't put anything else to it, you can't tell me nothing else. This is what it's going to be, this is how it's going to be. And if you try to dictate what I say or dictate what I tell you, you know, oh, I'm going to, you know, combat with you and say, oh, it can't be this, it can't be that, or whatever, because they have strict rules or bylaws that their company follows on every single building or whatever. They don't want to work with the township, they don't want to work with Planning Commission or the zoning board, because I've been to all those meetings. I watched everybody have their discussion with them, talk to them. They had lawyers there, they had traffic study people, they had any type of person you could think of, people that I didn't even know existed that had a small industry that was there to prove every single point that they have a right to that and you have no say in what's going on or what, what, you know, could happen or not happen or whatever. That, you know, we want, you know, twelve pumps, sixteen pumps, we want eighteen pumps, we want thirty pumps. You can't tell me how many I can't have. When, when can the store open, which John Mack alluded to? Whatever, you can't be open, you know, till twelve o'clock or you can't be open till two. Oh, you can't tell us that because we have a right to our own time. It seems like everything they want to dictate and tell you guys that you make the decision, you run Newtown. Understand the zoning laws and things change or whatever, but at the end of the day, you guys make the decision. It shouldn't be them telling you how to do it. And because they can use legal force to tell you guys, oh, if you don't do this, I'm going to sue you or whatever, it just shows you how they're bullying the way into Newtown. If they wanted to be good neighbors, they would say, hey, let's get together, let's talk about this, let's work in an open session and see exactly how this is best to fit Newtown to make it where it's going to help the residents that live right near the church, which they didn't talk to, they only talked to the church, how it's going to benefit the traffic, to make sure the traffic can flow greatly and traffic can move without having a bottleneck of people because they have to come out one direction. And that, you know, other events that happen or other events that go on down at the Shadybrook Farms, which is never a consideration because they don't live in Newtown. And we want to talk about traffic, this, earlier this meeting, I should say, about parts of Newtown, we're talking about people getting hit or whatever. And then we're talking about, earlier in the meeting, we were talking about police officers and spending certain amount of money, you know, between Wrightstown and Newtown or whatever. We do need police officers and, you know, we need vehicles for them to patrol. But now you're going to tell them, oh, you got to spend more time at the Newtown Wawa because of possible crime and things that could arise because they're going to be open at two, three o'clock in the morning or whatever. It just, all this stuff that we have to try to figure out and all this stuff that has to be worked out is like thrown to the side because Wawa's going to sue you. And it, it doesn't make sense to, you know, just throw everything away or whatever. What we need to do is if this has to go through, which I don't want it, and most people, you know, that are going to be up here don't want it, but if it has to go through, it should be sat down with, you know, head CEOs and people that can make a decision. You should sit there in a, you know, open forum and have a discussion and make sure that every single piece is, you know, situated and every single piece is discussed and is properly, you know, agreeable between you guys, the citizens, which, you know, we only have so much to say, and Wawa, Provco, or whoever is going to make the final decision, as they say, because right now, we got so many questions, we got so many people trying to get something out of them and, you know, they don't even want to give you an answer, they don't have an answer. They're like, well, you can't say that. It's like basically saying, we want, you know, Charmin in our bathroom. And you're like, no, I want, you know, you know, some other type of toilet paper in there. And they won't even allow you to do that. So I think right now, this is a no-go. You should not let this go or whatever and try to work something out. If it has to be in Newtown, then it's going to benefit everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Turn, turn the microphone on. There's that little button. Says push to talk. There you go. You got it. And please, your name and where you're from.
My name is Thomas Crawford. First, I'd like to thank you for your time and service. I, I'd like to address the issue of the board's discretion.
Could you say where you're from?
I, I own the property at ten Lower Silver Lake Road, which is in a very short walking distance from the Wawa site.
Thank you, Thomas.
As Wawa, I think, attempted to avoid, and one of the board members here mentioned, to use a residential property immediately behind Wawa for many years. It is a family with two children. I have photos, which I'd like to make part of the record, which shows the residential property. You can see a basketball court there, a swing set. You know, a family has been there for many years. They're actually neighbors. I, I own the adjacent, you know, I mean, property to that property. I'd like to emphasize what I believe is an important distinction for the board's consideration. The fact is, most businesses close at night. Okay? Wawa wants to remain open twenty-four-sevent, immediately next to a family residence. Now, as mentioned by others, and I'll be brief, okay, twenty-four operations, twenty-four-seven operations means you have constant lights, constant traffic, and you have issues of criminality twenty-four-seven. And yes, Wawa is known to have issues with respect to criminality for a variety of reasons. Now, the applicant's attorney argues that Wawa can, or the board should disregard the residential usage because it's part of the church's property. I, I want to give you an example to think about, and somebody else mentioned the site on Sycamore and Jefferson. There's a mixed usage, and it's very, very common to have a mixed usage. Many properties, you will have retail on the first floor and you have residential apartments, you know, above. And it's common to, I mean, to have that. But I would emphasize that the retail below, it's not open twenty-four-seven the way Wawa, okay, would be open twenty-four-seven. You cannot ignore the residential usage because it's part of the church property. The ordinance says residential use. That's the language of the ordinance, that's the governing language, and you will ultimately prevail, okay, on, on that language. First, for all the reasons which have already been articulated, I would urge the township, the board to deny, okay, the application which is before the board. Okay? Second, we would urge the board, as an alternative, would be to limit the hours of operation. I assume that would be subject to a legal challenge, but I believe the board ultimately would prevail in that legal challenge. And I, I guess a final point, I'd just like to emphasize to board, you know, your allegiance is to the, the residents and the voters of Newtown Township. Wawa and I, I think the person who spoke before me, I, I think really what he was telling you is that Wawa's bullies. And we would just urge the board, please do not be bullied by Wawa. And I think that, you know, Wawa's just a bully at every step and not just keep coming at you and coming at you and coming at you. And it's, it's incremental, okay, until they get everything they want. And we would just urge the board, do not be bullied by Wawa and make the right decision. If I could just introduce the photo, it's just part of the record, please.
Mr. Crawford, there is no formal record. You can certainly hand them up for the boards to observe. Thank you.
All right. My name is Jed Hallerbach. I'm a lifelong resident here at Newtown since nineteen ninety. I'm disappointed that the zoning law was changed to shoehorn in the Wawa. I don't think that the zoning law should have been changed in the first place and an in-person meeting should have been held before making this decision to change the zoning law. So before the Wawa vote, I would like to suggest a vote on repealing the E thirty ordinance first, since it was originally passed during the height of COVID, behind closed doors, without any participation from the community in this room or elsewhere. This is an OR, Office Research District we're talking about, and gas stations aren't allowed there. Why are we changing the law for big business to give them the sweetest part of the township and snuff out the little guy? You know, who's regulating who here if a multi-billion-dollar corporation can come into our town and tell us what to do? There are plenty of small business owners and local residents here who play by the rules and do not change zoning laws, like Stockburger Chevrolet. What this change in zoning code did was enable Wawa to cut in line in front of all these small businesses and be the first thing that people see as they exit I ninety-five and enter Newtown. There's going to possibly be signs all over ninety-five directing traffic, funneling it into Newtown, but not for Wawa, but not for the local businesses that still need and deserve our support. Numerous studies show that money spent at small businesses stays in the local economy at a higher percentage than money spent at chain retailers. These big chain stores siphon money out of our local economy and we shouldn't cave to bullies with deep pockets that threaten to sue us every time they hear the word no. We recently had Becky's Deli go out of business. She's been there since the nineteen eighties. In the Courier-Times article, she cited all the chains built in the Newtown Shopping Center as one of the reasons she went under. It is my fear that this Wawa goes as poorly as the traffic nightmare at the Newtown Shopping Center. Essentially, if we lose our local businesses here, then what else do we have? We will have lost what makes Newtown unique. I do not believe it's a good idea to have, to build twelve to sixteen gas pumps, mind you, right over the Core Creek Park waterway, where I go canoeing and many others fish and participate in recreational activities. And it'll be the closest gas station built in prox- in recreational activities. And it'll be the closest gas station built in proximity to Core Creek Waterway, from looking at Google Maps Satellite Overlay. The environmental impact statement was barely discussed at the Planning Commission. Will there be monitoring wells to detect leaks in the underground storage tanks? Questions like this. Core Creek and Lake Luxembourg are already impaired waterways. So is the nearby Nishamani Creek, where, as of last year, the DEP issued a do not eat advisory on fish, because they are toxic, full of toxic chemicals. Over half of the waterways in the U.S. are now designated as an impaired status. I don't believe that 12 to 16, or 18, as John Mack said, possibly gas pumps would be doing, are local parks any favor. And we shouldn't be building gas stations on open land adjacent to local parks. Did you know that there are bald eagles nesting there along Core Creek? Our national symbol, recovering from near extinction, these bald eagles are nesting directly downstream in proximity to this super Wawa, and will be feeding on the fish and other prey, and whatever stormwater runoff, motor oil, and other pollution and leaks come from this Wawa construction. Many residents, myself included, are concerned about the effect of this construction on quality of life. We're concerned about bright stadium floodlight pollution. You know, 24-hour lighting is really out of place in this area. It would negatively affect wildlife. Additionally, this is a historic, quiet, woodsy farming town, not a place for light pollution. There is a concern of the parcel turning into a drug lot, bringing crime and drug trafficking, as it'll be the only thing open 24/7. You know, the Wawa in Norristown last year had bullets fly through the window. We've already mentioned the closures here in Ben Salem and locally of the restricted hours due to robberies and crime. You know, we're concerned about loitering, kids riding their bikes up the bypass trying to get a snack, and the revolving door of in-and-out traffic that this super gas station will bring to the neighborhood. At the zoning hearing board meeting, when one of the zoning persons asked if the Wawa traffic engineer knew what happened during Christmas time, referring to the Shady Brook Farm light show, they hadn't heard of that. They didn't take into account that there are very long lines of cars backed up and down the bypass to see the light show. You know, another thing concerning traffic, we have Wegmans and 200 townhouses going on on Stony Hill Road across from Shady Brook Farm. So there's already going to be a convenient place to stop for food. There's going to be a lot more traffic congestion, which maybe have been overlooked in the out-of-date and inaccurate traffic study that's on your desk, out of date by six to 10 years, as the crash data was sampled from the traffics, as the crash data sampled from the traffic studies from 2012 to 2016. Additionally, the bypass was originally designed and intended to be a greenway. Traffic is already congested on the bypass, and the Wawa will exacerbate the traffic problem. Most concerning, it will also set legal precedent to develop along the bypass, adding more congestion. If this super Wawa is allowed to ram its way through, every other big box door will cite this legal ramification and say, you let them in, so now you have to let us in too. Green trees and fresh air will be ripped out, and Arby's and Chuck E. Cheese will go in. Blue skies and birds are going to be replaced by McDonald's and Burger King. Forested land, home to many creatures, will be gone parking lots. Many people have expressed the concern of our greenway turning into street road or Roosevelt Boulevard, a heavily trafficked and dangerous highway surrounded by big box chains and parking lots, blight and sprawl. Not only that, but if traffic gets worse in the bypass, more people will opt to drive on the backroads through Newtown Borough and Township, which are not meant to handle that volume of traffic. You know, we don't know the exact number of traffic, because the traffic study was out of date, according to the Planning Committee, due to methodology, or only sampling on certain days. And I think they were really unprepared at this zoning hearing board and the Planning Committee. And I think to push this through without up-to-date and accurate traffic data would be reckless and negligent. So I ask you to please preserve the Newtown bypass as a greenway, as it was its original intention. You know, look across the river to New Jersey and Hopewell Township as an example of what successful land preservation is. We've got so many local parks, playgrounds, trails, hunting areas, open space, historic farm preserves. We can do that, too. Bucks County has a massive problem of overdevelopment. We are chipping away at our natural landscapes here and shooting ourselves in the foot. If we don't protect it, soon there may be no Newtown left. It will be a suburban sprawl of Philadelphia. Additionally, gas stations leak. It's not a matter of if, but when. These contaminants get into the groundwater. The firefighting foam retardant, forever chemicals, PFOS and PFOAs from the long-shuttered Willow Grove Air Base are now being detected in the Newtown Artesian water supply. So we know these things travel in the groundwater. We'll have cancer-related chemicals, like benzene, that are present in gasoline and groundwater contaminants from leaky underground fuel tanks that corrode, gas vapors containing VOCs associated with poor health and pollution of the ozone. There are higher levels of air pollution, particulate matter and carbon dioxide measured around gas stations, and other heavy metal solvents, wiper fluid, et cetera. According to the Sierra Club, one gallon of petroleum can contaminate 1 million gallons of water. One pinprick-sized hole in an underground storage tank can leak 400 gallons of fuel a year. There are 680,000 underground storage tanks in America and a backlog of 130,000 cleanups. 9,000 new leaks are discovered annually. According to the EPA, corrective action for leaks that affect groundwater typically costs from $100,000 to over $1 million, depending on the extent of contamination. Also from the EPA, half of the U.S. population relies on groundwater for drinking water, including the majority of rural folks, and, I would assume, some of the folks out in Middletown Township, closest to the Wawa. The family that John Mack showed on the satellite map, and the person that spoke before me, you know, I wonder if they have a well nearby or a septic system that would get overflowed by the stormwater of this construction. I'd also like to say Supervisor Calabro, with respect, sir, according to the Bucks County Herald, you were against Stockburger Chevrolet developing on the bypass originally. At the time, you said the township was putting the interest of business over the residents by allowing development on the bypass. According to the Newtown patch, you even suggested residents boycott Beneficial Bank when they tried to strong-arm the local government and force their way into the borough. And I would like to say that's the Supervisor Calabro that I would like to vote for in 2023. At the last Planning Commission meeting, a Planning Commission member brought up how this, how developing the super Wawa gives an extra $10,000 in tax revenue for the township per month. But they never mentioned the increase in cost of all the local road repairs with extra traffic, the cost of additional first responders, the cost of a gasoline spill. I mean, the tax argument to me seems pretty weak. If we need a super Wawa in order to operate at budget, then something isn't right here. I just don't believe that all this is worth it for a super gas station. This is a multi-billion dollar corporation that's trying to force its way into our town. Change the zoning law, or I'll take the township to court and bankrupt you, which, by the way, they've done several times already, because they don't care about the rules, or believe they have to follow the rules, or abide by the authority of elected officials such as yourselves. They've levied multiple lawsuits against Newtown Township, because they believe they're above the law and the rules don't apply to them. And Wawa can spend unlimited sums of money with their super PAC to dilute our votes, skirt our laws, and do whatever they want. Newtown doesn't need more chains to be more like everywhere else. We need to protect our environment and open space, protect our residents and our community, and our small businesses who have been here in many cases for generations. And we shouldn't be changing zoning laws to exacerbate that issue and cater to corporations. They are not above the law, and they shouldn't be able to forcibly change the law, because they have more power and money to throw at the issue. We certainly don't need any monopolies to come into this town and add insurmountable competition to our small businesses. You know, you'll have one shiny, big new store in 20-
Sir, can I just ask you to-
Yep.
-wrap it up?
Last paragraph.
Because there are people behind you.
Sure. We'll have one big shiny new business and 20 empty stores. I think Wawa will do more harm than good to this community if it is allowed to force its way into Newtown. I ask you to respectfully, to do the right thing for the community and the environment, and vote as if the zoning law was never changed to placate this Wawa. Please let your legacy be open space, land preservation, resistance to big corporate interests. Please keep the greenway green. Thank you, Supervisors.
Thank you.
I'll try to be brief. You know, I'm not a brief person, but Frank McCarron to Lancy Court. So just one thing about the 24 hours. Originally, I was in favor of keeping open 24 hours. You know, not everybody works 9 to 5. There are plenty of people drive down from Upper Bucks that work a night. And why shouldn't they be able to get gas? And why shouldn't they be able to get a snack? And you have St. Mary's, which you have people working there on night shifts. You have patients at all hours of the night. And it seemed to me that of any location where there could be a 24-hour, I thought that was a good location. That was until the Holland store was robbed. And, you know, that was robbed, and as a result, Wawa has temporarily closed all seven Bucks County stores from midnight to 5:00 a.m. And I found it a little disingenuous that the counselor would come and, and people acting like, oh, did they? I don't know. Did they? You know, I, they could have been more proactive and said, you know, we just want you to know, you're going to approve this, but we are working on a plan for all our Bucks County stores, and you'll be included in it. They could have given some assurance, and I found that very disappointing. And then I also found disappointing, yes, it was a 3-3 tie at the Planning Commission, and so technically it didn't pass, and it got rejected. But I would have hoped that they would have come here with, in some good effort, to say something about the reasons, and say, you know, we thought about this, and we're going to do this. Or we thought about that, and we're going to do that, instead of, hey, you know, if it's not in the ordinance, too bad. So you have kind of a decision here. I know you don't want to go to court, but I'm worried that even if you approve this, they're still going to take you to court and ask for more pumps. So the only leverage you have over them right now is not to approve this. So that's all I'd say. Thank you.
Hello. Eileen Steele-Slayzak, Newtown Borough resident and Newtown Township business owner. I know most of you. Thank you for all the hard work you do for keeping Newtown quality, not quantity. We really appreciate it. We like our small town. We like where it's at. And on behalf of the other four gas stations in Newtown, you should have a comment, because you're affecting all of our lives. We are second generation ourselves, on behalf of my family. And my other cousin is a third generation, and my best friends have the other gas station. So please consider us when you're deciding on what to do, how big, and once you get in there, which I know you're going to keep fighting. I don't have 10 lawyers and professionals behind us. But I do have a community that loves us, and we appreciate every customer that comes into our shop. And we have hired many, many kids that have gone on to have professionals, lawyers, accountants, and we're very proud of the history that we have had with this community. And we want to stay, and we want to keep it small. And again, it's quality, not quantity. So when you said no comment, that really hit me. I want to mind my own business and respect everybody up here, but, you know, it hurts. So I understand that growth, we've grown with the community. We want to keep growing with the community. And speaking about the electric, I'm working with my environmental lawyer right now. We're trying to get two installed at our gas station, because we understand that that is where we're headed. So we work on Teslas all the time. So we are trying to move with the times. And that's all I have to say, and thank you very much. Thank you.
I'm Cesar Premes, and I am a Newtown resident. I will keep this quick. I know you're going to be glad to hear that. I will say that, first of all, it seems to me that the fundamental problems, and they're legitimate, that have been raised tonight are, A, gas stations, and B, the traffic ensuing from that. So maybe that's something that the Wawa representatives should reconsider, or you guys should reconsider, is gas stations, the number thereof. I'm not particularly opposed to Wawa, but I think the traffic in the gas stations could be a problem. On the other hand, the thing that really bothers me is that piece of real estate. That is not going to remain empty forever, guys. It just isn't. Somebody's going to go in there, whether it's Wawa, or whether it's whomever. How do we know that the people that will populate that space afterward, they're going to keep rejecting because of different reasons? Maybe they'll be worse than what's being proposed here. Maybe it will be. That's something you need to think about. That's it. Thank you.
John DiApril, Newtown grant, biggest and the best. For any Supervisors who are thinking about voting no on this thing, I want you to, you know, really think hard in this. You know, just a symbolic gesture, because you feel, or maybe some of your neighbors feel, know Wawa. But there's a lot of people in Newtown that want a Wawa. They don't come out, it's hard getting people out. You guys know that. You see most of the meetings when it's me and a few other people in the room. So, you know, just don't want to do a symbolic gesture, because you know what this is going to end up, if you vote no. And your soliciting firm, whatever you want to call it, what are they? 0-1 now? You got a big development going on on Buck Road that's going to cause all kinds of traffic problems. And, you know, hey, I don't think they're the best, so, you know. I don't think you should put your faith in your solicitors. You know, I heard a lot of stuff about future, future electric, you have electric. Yeah, well, they could put in more electric things. I mean, they might come out with six other cars and have six different types come out, just like Tesla has their own. You know, do you know that's going to happen? If you get many more Teslas blowing up, and you see how much it costs to replace the battery on those things, you know, is that going to happen? I mean, you know, there's experts that say that, you know, the United States has more fuel, you know, underground than Saudi Arabia. You know, hey, you know, our governor chose to stop exploration and stuff. Depends on what's going to happen, the election coming up. Anyhow, you got, excuse me, I can't read my handwriting. You know, I mean, this is a convenience store. Convenience, convenience for people. One gentleman said that, you know, not everybody works, you know, day shift. There's people who work night shift. You see it a lot. If you watch comments, I'm sure one of the guys does up there, the comments on Patch and everything. And you see that, you know, they're third shifters, and, you know, they want a place to eat, they want a place where they get gas that's open at that hour. You know, not saying that, I mean, they're asking for 24 hours, but not saying that they will keep 24 hours, like a lot of the stores in the area. I mean, you keep on bringing up Philadelphia. Philadelphia's a major city. You got the politics there, you know, sucks. Everybody knows that. And that's one of the reasons why there is all that crime. You know, they keep on electing these morons. I don't know. You know, people from the borough, Lower Makefield, Middletown, and, you know, they're building all over the place. We have no say in that. You know, we're Newtown. And they build what they want and do what they want. They listen to us? No, they don't listen to us. And, you know, saying traffic, traffic, traffic historically gets worse, because of, you know, more people moving in and stuff. I mean, everybody tries to get out of the city. I'm lucky I did, you know. You know, most of you guys, most of you people did. You know, one guy mentioned, you know, oh, welcome to urban development. You know, hey, somebody let him in 27 years ago, didn't they? You know, 26 years. You know, I'm glad they let me in. I love Newtown. Newtown, Newtown, these stuff. I mean, they're talking future stuff all the time, you know. Oh, signs on I-95. How do you know they're going to build, put a sign on I-95? I think there's ordinance that you can't build, you know, billboards right there. So, you know, and then why would they stop to get gas in Pennsylvania when five more minutes would be in Jersey with cheaper gas? You know, I mean, stuff like that, eh, yeah, you know, it's nice to say, but does it make sense? No. You know, somebody mentioned, oh, kids on bikes are going to try to cross the bypass. Didn't we have about a half hour worth of comment about- Didn't we have about a half hour worth of comment about a street in Newtown, about kids on bikes having problems? That's everywhere. Somebody was hitting Newtown Grant last month, walking their dog. Of course, I don't know if they were on the sidewalk then, but, you know, you know, they got hit. I mean, people are driving crazy. You can't stop that. You know, police could ticket him, but some people want to cut the police all the time. You know, what's the answer? You know, there's no answer. But you guys, you better not shoot this down because I don't want my taxpayers' money. I don't want, and my friends don't want their money to go do, do a lawsuit that we're probably going to lose. We're probably going to lose it, especially with the soliciting firm we have. Thank you.
Thanks, Sean.
Anybody else from Newtown before I say anything? Okay. Blake Hayman from Middletown Township, again. Okay. Couple points I want to mention. Okay. I don't know if there's been any kind of coordination with your neighboring townships. Middletown, they are in the process of talking about building on the old Stone Meadow Farm, right by some, between Summit, up by Summit Trace on 413. Okay? They are doing that. You've got a Wegmans, which is pretty much a done deal in Lower Makefield. What I'm getting at is that has anybody driven on that bypass going from where the old TD Bank was, going out to 95 at 7:30 in the morning? Okay. That is bad now. You know, it's only going to get worse. It's not going to get better. As other people have said, once this open land is gone, whoever buys it, it's gone. Whether, you know, if people want to buy a property and develop it, as long as they get the legal blessings and stuff, they can develop it as they see fit. I totally understand that. You know, with Wawa coming in with the gas, I feel sorry for the small mom and pops that are here in town that have been here for multi-generations. And also, my closing thought is criminology does not know municipal boundaries. You've got that property on Silver Lake Road, which is right by, right in the area of 41 University. On the other side of that, those properties are in Middletown. So if you have a bad person doing something, they're not going to stop at the Newtown Township line. They're going to go wherever they can get away. So just take that to thought, and I hope everybody takes that to thought and thinks long and hard before you cast your votes. Thank you.
Good evening, supervisors. My name is Pam Duffy, 125 Hope Road, and I live in Holland, PA. I am here representing the Holland residents who are on our movement. We're fighting Wawa too, as you know. We have 30, over 30, almost 3,200 people have signed our petition against the Wawa, and we have hundreds of people that are active. And again, I mean, these meetings are long. I'm here representing them.
Yes, just to make sure your comment about Newtown and...
I am. I was just explaining who I am. I'm not talking about, that's all I'm saying about Holland. Oh, except maybe the, when they pointed the gun at the employee's head, but other than that. Okay, so I just want to start, I want to thank you for doing your job as Newtown Township supervisors by attempting to make Wawa be clear and transparent on building their mega gas station convenience store in your town, which will change Newtown Township forever. Sadly, in my opinion, I don't think Wawa is clear or transparent, but honestly, most of these people aren't even Wawa. They are Profco. They're the developer. The developer who will build the Wawa. And the minute it is built, they're going to put it on the market for maybe, I don't know, $8 or $10 million, the way I understand it, and any rich person or corporation just buys it. Wawa is a tenant. That's why it's so easy for them to take down their shingle when things go south, as what happened in Philadelphia. I think there was a picture in the paper of Wawa taking down their shingle, and they just move along. You know, maybe somebody on the other side of the world, are they going to care about Newtown that owns the property after Profco builds it and moves on? I don't know. Anyway, Mr. Van Louveney started with a chronology of events, scolding you for doing your job, making him wait four years to build his mega gas station in your beloved town. And I know that I watch you guys sit here for three and four hours every two weeks. I don't think that's easy. I don't think you guys get paid, if you do, very much for this position. So I know you guys love Newtown. So he stood here and scolded you and told you what you must do. Mr. Van Louveney's lawyer tactic, which I have witnessed before, is to narrow the issues. In this case, he's saying the only plan is gas and store. That's it. We're not talking about anything else. We're not talking about 24/7. Well, excuse me, that's what Wawa is. That's what a super Wawa is, 24/7. This is not a court of law, not the way I understand the supervisors meeting, and a gigantic 24/7 super gas convenience store is not just storing pumps. Mr. Van Louveney argues the 24/7 is not part of the plan. 24/7 is the plan. It is. Which, I wasn't going to say all of that, but since I sat here through it and listened to the nonsense, I decided to. What I really came here to talk about was Wawa equals crime. In the last few weeks, what you've seen, what's happened in Philadelphia, what's happened at the Holland Wawa, which is a few hundred feet from my house, I go in there. I really don't have anything against Wawa. I go in there, I talk to the people, the people that work there. There was a middle-aged woman who was working there one night at 1:30 in the morning, and I stopped in to get coffee, and it was empty. And I said, do you get a lot of people in here at 1:30 in the morning? She said, no, just your occasional drunk. And I wonder, was she the woman who had the gun pointed to her head? I can't, I worked in retail most of my young life, and I was robbed never at gunpoint at Chaminier Mall. But I can't imagine somebody coming in and putting a gun to my head at 3 o'clock in the morning. That's what happens when you have a 24/7 business at 3 o'clock in the morning.
Again, I would ask that you keep your comments addressing Newtown's Wawa.
I am, but I mean, it's, Wawa is the big package, and we can only look at other Wawas to see what's coming. You don't have a Wawa. We have one. There's also, and, okay, I understand what you're saying. But if you let Wawa, Wawa equals crime these days. It's on the national news. It's on every news station, everywhere. It's been in the news the last couple of weeks. If you let them in, criminals do the crime. Wawa is not the crime, but Wawa provides the venue. You stick that Wawa on the bypass, you have, as somebody said earlier in the comments, you're between Trenton and Philadelphia. You are nestled right in there. If I'm a criminal, and we all know that a lot of criminals are smart, I'm coming to Newtown because I think you're a quiet little, you're just a quiet little country bumpkins that I can get away with something, and I can go in there. That's, and I mean, Trenton, Philadelphia, all I got to do is hop on the bypass, right to Silver Lake Road, and there I am. So build your super Wawa, and Newtown will become a target, just like all the other ones. They have moved in, crime, someone else said crime has no boundaries. Please do the right thing, and thank you for holding Profco, Wawa, whoever they are, their feet to the fire. You're doing your job, and I appreciate it. And I'm watching you, and I thank you, and I know most of your Newtown Township residents do as well. Thank
I don't see anybody else coming forward. Do we have any other discussion from the board members at this point? Seeing none, I'll call a question. All those in favor of, all those in favor, let me find the right script here. All those in favor of approving the motion as Mr. Sanders read it, say aye. Aye. Opposed?
No.
We have two, two to three against.
In light of the motion to grant plan approval not passing, excuse me, would the board entertain a motion to deny preliminary and final land development approval for Profco Pine Good Newtown LLC for the development of tax parcel 29-10-42 at Route 332, the Newtown bypass, and Lower Silver Lake Road?
Before we, before I call for a motion on that one, real quick, I just wanted to ask the three dissenters if adjusting the hours to 5:00 AM to 12:00 midnight would make any difference?
I don't have to tell you why I voted no. There are many reasons, and I don't understand what you're trying to do. Didn't we just vote? What do we have to vote on something else for?
It has to be a denial for the record.
Mr. Mack, the board has to make a decision. The board decided not to grant it. That doesn't mean you're denying it. I'm trying to protect the board here.
We did that with Arcadia too, I believe. We had to be called back into session.
We had to come back for a special meeting because we didn't do that once. I'm learning from my mistakes.
All right. So what is it that you're saying? Please, a simple person like me can understand it. Read it again. I make a motion to deny this. Is that what you need?
I'm suggesting a motion to deny the preliminary and final land development approval for Profco Pine Good Newtown LLC for the development of tax parcel 29-10-42.
I so move.
At Route 332, Newtown bypass, and Lower Silver Lake Road.
I so move to deny this.
That's all you had to say in the first place, Mr. Mack.
No, no, that's not true. I had to understand what the process was.
So now you understand. And I guess my, we're going to call for a second in a minute. My question to the group was, does changing it to 5:00 AM to midnight make a difference? Would that be?
For me, it does not, because even if we say so, that any time they can take us to court and change that. So it's not binding, and I don't believe it would make a difference.
Would be if they made it as a condition, but, okay. So we have a motion. Do we have a second for the denial?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion from the board or the public? All those, seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of denying the application, say aye.
Aye.
I didn't mean to say aye. So we got the three of you, and opposed is no. So three to two to deny.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, that brings us to reports of officials. Reports of officials. All right. We can give folks 30 seconds. Does anyone else on the board need a quick break? Can we keep going? Okay, we'll keep going. Okay, those in the audience, please keep it down. We have a few more items of business to take care of this evening. Okay, our engineer, the 2022 Liquid Fuels Road Program payment certificate.
Yep, thank you. We have payment certificate number one for the 2022 Liquid Fuels Road Program. Based on the work that's completed, we recommend payment to Harris Black Topping Inc. in the amount of $203,604.80.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? I'll second it since it's my street. And they did a nice job, so I'd like to pay them. Any discussion from the board?
I'm in favor of paying them. But I wanted to ask about the curved lines on the bypass. What do you call those? Trip lines or?
The skip lines.
Skip lines.
Yep.
Are those definitely going to be done part of this program?
They will be, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion. Do we have a motion and a second? Any further discussion from the board, from the public? All those in favor of paying the payment certificate for the Liquid Fuels Road Program, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Anything else for our engineer this evening? That's all on the agenda? Okay, shall we?
Thanks.
Skip the solicitor's report or wait, well, for a moment?
No, let's skip them.
Do I do manager's report?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. General fund balances of this evening is $5,965,216. Plan expiration before the board with no action required. We have Chief Forsyth to give the monthly emergency services report. Evening, Chief.
Good evening, Chief.
Good evening, everyone. For the month of September, the emergency services and the Fire Association responded to 121 calls for service. Emergency services completed 59 annuals fire safety inspections in Newtown Township and 57 in Newtown Borough. You received a breakdown of the calls by municipality. There was a total of 10 calls in Newtown Borough. Emergency services responded to eight calls for service, and the Fire Association responded to two. Total calls between the township and Borough were 102. We responded to 67 EMS calls, six dwelling fires, four traffic accidents, 24 alarm systems, three building fires, two squad assists, one dumpster fire, two brush fires, two CO alarms, two wires calls, two fumes calls, one automobile call. Again, we had two stuck elevators. I think that problem has been resolved. We had two auto extracations and one investigation. The Fire Association attended six different special events for the month of September. Again, this is a service we provide to the community. We try to get out and do our recruiting to try to get some volunteers, so we're always busy out there doing something. So that is my report for the month of September.
That's a lot of events for September.
And this month is even worse.
It's that time of year.
Yeah.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Sure. I assume that we still haven't received any response for the SAFER grant?
There have been no SAFER grants issued since September 21st. We were told that there were $200 million put back in the SAFER fund from ARPA monies, but they have not released anything, and they're supposed to be released by the end of October. So we have our fingers crossed for this week.
I get it. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for the chief? Okay. Let me ride along.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That concludes my report.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Lewis. We can go back to the solicitor. We skipped you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First item on our report is consideration of approval of a written decision for conditional use that the board granted to Stretch Bucks LLC at the last meeting. Is there a motion to approve that conditional use decision?
Do we have a motion to approve the conditional use? Okay, we have a motion. We have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second for the conditional use approval. Any discussion from the board? Any from the public? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of approving the conditional use, written, written conditional use approval for Stretch Tech, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, okay, we have one objection. So motion carries 3-0, 3-0-1.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Second item is consideration of a resolution requiring the tax collector to waive additional charges and fees for real estate taxes that are, that are not paid on time because a new homeowner moved into the township and did not receive a tax bill. This is a state... This is a state law, and the requirement is that all municipalities adopt this resolution. I'd request a motion to adopt the resolution as written.
Motion approved.
Motion, do we have a motion, we have a second? I'll second it. A motion and a second on, on the resolution. Any questions from the board? From the public? I guess I have one question. This is a state, I just wanted to reiterate it, it's a state requirement that we're fulfilling administratively.
That is correct.
So seeing no, other questions? Let me call the question, and all those in favor of adopting the resolution, requiring this tax collector to waive additional charges for real estate taxes per the state act, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Third item and final item on our agenda is the five zoning hearing board applications that you heard Ms. Driscoll present to the board earlier. Does the board wish to take any position on any of those applications?
To clarify, the Planning Commission had no, recommended that we take no action. Correct.
That's correct.
Yep.
Hearing crickets, I will assume that the no action is required. That concludes our report.
Okay, thank you. We skipped the manager, we did the manager's report already, so we're going to bills, minutes, bills list, bills list and report.
Like to make a motion to approve the minutes from the meeting of October 12th, 2022?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion from those minutes? Seeing none, any from the public? So I'll call the question. All those in favor accepting the minutes from October 12th, 2022, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm staying.
And one abstention, four zero one.
Like to make a motion to approve paying our bills in the amount of $1,484,62,016.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Mack. A motion and a second, any discussion from the board? Any from the public? Seeing, seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of paying our bills is found on the October 12th bills list, say aye.
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six. Twenty-six, I'm sorry, yep. Forgot to change it.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five, five zero.
Sorry, can I ask one simple question? I forgot about.
Sure. Is it going to change your vote?
No. On page seven, it mentions Wrightstown Township for payment for vehicle violations of $869.94. We owe Wrightstown money?
Yes, that's their portion of the citations that were written.
I'm sorry, I don't get that.
That, traffic tickets were written in Wrightstown, we owe them money.
Okay.
So the people pay us, and then we?
That's correct.
Okay, so, okay, thank you.
Finally, I'd like to make a motion to approve the total of interfund transfers in the amount of $41,950 even.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion from the board? Any from the public? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of paying our bills, or of, of the, approving the interfund transfers for October 26th, 2022, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. That brings us to our second round of public comment. Same, if we have any residents who would like to come and make any other comments for this evening?
John D. April, Newtown Grant. When you guys go to raise taxes this year, just remember that, you know, you guys are the cause of most of it, you know? You voted against Profco tonight. You know, different things happened. I mean, it's been going on more than four years before Mr. Van Louveney got involved. Most of you know that, of course, one guy, he's in outer space, but, you know, because you never had that before. If you look at, you know, the bypass, Middletown's got, you know, a whole thing there. Lower Mick's going to build, you know? Newtown Borough comes up here, they don't ask us. None of these townships ask us when they want to build something. You know, they just go and do it. They'll go through their procedure. They don't need to ask us, they don't want to ask us. I can't see why you listen to these people from other places. You know, for the guy that does the surveys and stuff, how many people are really from Newtown that answered that? And not the Borough. You know, people say Newtown, and they're from the Borough, because it also is Newtown, you know? And if you were smart enough, you'd know that the Borough backed out of everything. Borough was in the jointure. They backed up, backed out. They used to get us to do their snow plowing. They backed out. They backed out of everything, every thing that they had to do with the township. They want to be their own, fine, let them be their own. Don't listen to them. Thanks.
Any other comments from the public? Seeing none, that'll take us to old business. And we had on the agenda, listed a budget discussion. Does anyone have anything they want to discuss about the budget this evening?
I do have things I want to discuss about the budget, but is it possible we can reschedule it since it is 22/11 and late having dinner or anything?
It's not, it's not necessary that we have the discussion. It's, it's on the agenda this, this meeting, and it'll be on the agenda the next meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, everybody good? Very, very well. All right, that brings us, any, any new business?
Can I ask a question on the budget?
Sure.
Mr. Lewis, this budget, what, how much of a tax increase does it reflect?
Total tax increase? It's 2.625.
2.625, and what's our tax, what's our tax base right now?
What's?
8.49?
It's 8.49.
That's what the two point, this 2.65 additional?
Yes.
Okay.
No, the 8.49 is current, the total additional is 11.115.
11.115. Now, now, the, on page 12, that would be the, the ending balance, 15 million? That would be our, our budget balance, 15,882,277? Is that correct?
The 15,882, yes, that's total expenditures, including transfers.
Okay, which, which would give us the net fund of 1,674,806?
That's, yes, that's projected for 2023.
Okay, and that would include the 888,855, which we are going to be collecting from Wrightstown Township, correct?
Yes, under the revenues.
So if we didn't collect that, our net fund balance would be 785,951, which, I'm not even deducting it from the 15 million, but deducting it from the net balance, that would, that would give us a pretty, pretty negative Moody's rating come next year, wouldn't it?
That would be far below the 10% target.
Okay. So maybe it's a good thing we are getting money from Wrightstown Township.
It's always good to get money.
Yeah, I don't know. According to something.
It's not free money. You have to provide services, which cost money, and if you're paying more to provide the service than the money you're getting.
2.5.
You're losing money.
It's 2.5 mils because it's to the Wrightstown residents.
Well, we can, we can have a further, unless there's other comments or questions about the budget?
It, it's nice to see that the budget was done early this season, and all the questions that this board has for that early budget, which was none tonight.
It's also 11 o'clock at night, dude.
Hey, dude, I've been here till two, two o'clock in the morning sometimes, dude.
Well, tonight, you'll be alone, I'm a single.
Well, maybe if, if you can't fulfill the late nights, you're saying that you can't fulfill your duties as a supervisor, Mr. Dude.
Okay, okay. I think because it's late, we're punchy, so.
No, we're not punchy, we're just, I, I can't believe the fact that you're using the time as an excuse not to discuss the budget, but within that budget, you have a tax increase, which I guess you don't care about discussing it because it's too late.
That's exactly what I want to discuss, I just don't want to do it right now.
Good for you, good for you, because it's too late. Maybe we should put a time limit on how long we should be here.
I mean, I could review the fact that we, that the two mils that we do are projecting for us.
We'll, we'll see how, we'll see what the discussion will be next meeting, and how many questions you have, you know? How many, how many questions you dudes and do-duetts will have in regards to the budget and the tax increase to the budget, because it doesn't matter. Some people are not going to vote for a tax increase, so that dude or duet doesn't care if we're here, here till 11 o'clock at night.
I would encourage everyone to bring some questions to the next meeting. All right, without objection, I'll adjourn the meeting?
No objection.
No objection? Meeting adjourned.